All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is Knox County Commission and Knoxville City Council Joint Workshop on Mental Health. We want to welcome members of the Knox County delegation to the General Assembly who are going to be participating with us today as well. So, thank you all for being here. We're going to start off with a Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Beeler. Commissioner Beeler?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Please stand, render a proper salute, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Bible and the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united in the physical, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, and we'll get started with some welcoming remarks and introductory remarks. I want to turn it first over to Lieutenant Governor McNally.
Oh, thank you. It's a pleasure for me to be here, and I serve in the Senate as a member of the Senate, also Speaker of the Senate, and also by virtue of statute Lieutenant Governor. My duties as Lieutenant Governor are very minimal. I like to joke and say all I do is check on Billy's pulse, but it's, I'm actually a member of the legislature and actually represent precincts in Knoxville along with Becky and Dr. Briggs. And one of my duties first and foremost is to appoint all the committees of the Senate. And I was very fortunate in being able to choose Dr. Briggs to chair our state and local government committee and Senator Massey to chair the Transportation and Safety Committee. And that's probably the only time in history, I think, that Knoxville has had three chairmen out of the nine chairmen. So you can see it's, not only are they on very important committees, but they also hold a significant portion of power in the state. And I certainly want to thank them and enjoy being here with you and enjoy being here with them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I want to recognize Knox County Commissioner Chair, DeRae.
Thank you. I want to say thank you to my colleagues that are here from commission. Thank you to our counterparts on the city council for being here and also to our state delegation members for being here. This topic is incredibly important. I feel that at some point in our lives, each of us will be touched by some sort of mental health issue where, whether it's ourselves, a family member, a friend. And so I just want to thank you and those of you who are in the audience for coming and showing support and showing that this is such an important issue that we face today. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm Vice Mayor Andrew Roberto. I want to express my sincere gratitude for all of our local leaders who took time out of their day today to come and assemble with us, both from city, county, county commission, as well as our state delegation. It is unique to have representatives of three different legislative branches together, not only once, but we've done this before. So this is the second time we've gotten together. So I think that's incredible. And we're all trying to work together to make our community better. It is certainly not lost on me, or I'm sure any of the other folks that are here, that there are passionate differences of opinions that we all have, and that's okay. However, as many times we've done this before, I certainly have faith that we can set those differences aside and work together towards a common purpose. For those joining us here today and for those watching at home, this joint workshop is about people, vulnerable people in our shared community who need help. We have all been touched by someone who struggles with mental health, and that common experience is what unites us here today. While we continue this conversation around mental health and services in our community, if you know someone or you yourself are suffering from a mental health crisis, please remember you can call 988 to be connected with care. And I had noticed in the audience, we have a lot of our professional providers, and I just wanted to take a minute before we get started and say thank you. So can we all just say a quick thank you to our professional providers? Okay, well, let's get started. So first up, we have LeAnn Hume-Hillyard and Candace Allen with McNabb Center, and they're going to review with us the Knoxville-Knox County Sequential Intercept Map. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'll introduce myself again. I'm LeAnn Hume-Hillyard. I'm the Executive Vice President for the McNabb Center, and I'm a licensed clinical social worker, and with me is...
Good evening. My name is Candace Allen. Can you all hear me? I'm one of the senior directors at the McNabb Center, and under my division falls the Criminal Justice Continuum.
So, we want to start by reviewing the Knoxville-Knox County Sequential Intercept mapping. We, to back up a little bit, I want to explain a little bit about what we call a SIM, what it is and what the goal is. So a SIM is really a community's process to create a picture of what, at any given time, the services and providers that make up all of the behavioral health services and substance abuse services for an individual who is struggling with a mental illness or substance use disorder, who is going through the juvenile, I'm sorry, the criminal justice system. So at the end of the SIM, what we should receive is a map and a picture, and it should guide us to what we believe in our community, specifically for us, would be gaps and also priorities. So one of the reasons we did this is, of course, you all know Knox County, excuse me, the city of Knoxville had asked us to do that, and the last SIM that was done in our community was back in 2015. So you can imagine there's a lot of services that have changed since that time into 2022. So that's what we wanted to capture. We thought it was important that we get a third-party entity to actually facilitate that process. So we worked with Policy Research Associates, who was nationally recognized as an entity that could come in and really facilitate that process for our community. What was great about that is that they had facilitated our SIM back in 2015. So a lot of the things that they were collecting from our community, they already had. So we felt like it was a good use and get us off to a really efficient start for the process because they already had a lot of that information. The first thing they wanted us to do is create a leadership committee that would guide the process. So that leadership committee was comprised of representatives from the Knox County Sheriff's Office, Knox County Police Department, an advocacy association, the District Attorney's Office, the city of Knoxville, the Public Defender's Office, and of course, a representative from the McNabb Center. Their first task was to identify the key stakeholders that we wanted to make sure were invited to the SIM. So what they did is identify all of the different social services agencies in the community, all of providers, faith-based organization, consumer advocates group, individuals we know that with learned and lived experiences who can participate in that process, and we sent out invitations. And I will tell you, we had a lot of respondents. If you'll go to the next slide, this is a list of everybody that participated in the April SIM in 2022. That is not all of the individuals who were invited. Those are ones who actually showed up and participated. I will say that a few of those had more than one representation. So it was one of the largest SIMs I think there has been. It was much larger than the one in 2015. So I'm really proud of that. It was also during a time, if you will remember, that we weren't sure a lot of people would come out and participate in person. So I was very proud of the interest and the investment that everybody had in our community to really have a good SIM completed. It was a two-day workshop. It was April 6th through the 7th. I'm going to turn it over to Candace to talk a little bit more in detail about what that SIM actually produced.
Thank you, LeAnn. So I'm going to just do a quick overview of the process of the SIM and really explain how the top priorities of change were identified. So if you look at this slide, you will see several components, and we're going to refer to those as intercepts. So at each of these intercepts, an individual who has a behavioral health diagnosis could become involved in the criminal justice at any point at these intercepts. So what the facilitators did is that we addressed each of them individually. So we would, so start out like with community services. We would develop, we would state, everybody in the room would talk about what do we have under community services? And that's called intercept zero. So everybody would list what we already have, and so they would go through that whole continuum and do this process. At the end of that, what you have is a map of existing services that we already have. And I'm just going to give brief examples maybe of some of these. We parked a long time on intercept zero, which is community services, because that's where you're going to find your crisis services, your crisis lines, mobile crisis, co-response, those kind of responses. Number two, in the law enforcement, of course, that's where you're going to have your 911, your patrol responses, et cetera. Number three, initial detention, initial court hearings. And then in the next one, in jails and courts, you're talking about specialized courts there as well. You know, we have our recovery court, veterans court, and soon-to-be mental health court. We're very excited about that. That was discussed at the SIM. Reentry would include both jail and prison reentry programs, and then of course, community corrections that involves parole, probation and parole. So everybody had input into what we already have. And the next step was that we also identified what we thought we should have, that we don't have, under each of those intercepts. And that is when that list, that complete list of what everybody in the room was able to participate in and contribute to, what they were all listed on, what everybody thought the gaps were. The next step was to vote on these gaps. So you had 60-plus individuals voting. You could vote for your top priorities, and you could have three votes, and you only could put one by, I mean, you couldn't like vote for one priority three times. And so what developed and came out of that was what you see as the top five priorities for change. And so what they were, number one, this is the most votes, expand case management resources, intensive communities-based, and improve community standards for case management. Number two, uninsured services expansion. Number three, affordable, permanent supportive housing. Number four, expand city co-response, development of county co-response. Also add Tennessee State Police to the crisis intervention team training. And I will just add that that was already taken care of because we invited them to the next one that we had, and they participated. And number five, transitional housing.
So what we received at the end of that process was this document, and so it is the Knoxville-Knox County SIM report. What you will find in it is the actual map itself. So it's going to outline all of the services at that point in time in each of those intercept points, and you can review those. It also talked about opportunities and gaps among each of those sections. You'll see, of course, what Candace mentioned, the priorities for change. There were more than five. There were, I think, 16. They focus on the top five. But you will see all of those, and you will see the number of votes that each one received. It'll also break down in some recommended action steps that the groups were, you know, problem-solving about how to reach those priorities, as well as the Policy Research Associates recommendations, much more on a larger scale, and, you know, input they would want us to know. What I would say, like I said already, this map's already probably out of date. It's been since April. So we have already expanded to those services that we have. Just as a few off the top of my head that I was thinking about, we have increased and expanded medication-assisted treatment in our community since that time. We have increased the mental health court Candace mentioned. That will get started. That's very exciting. We have already talked and funded an EMPATH unit, which I'll talk about later. And then we are expanding residential substance use disorder treatment beds space. So those are just a few things that are on the horizon that are already additions to intercepts that are not in the map. And with that, I'll end our SIM report.
Thank you so much. And just so everybody knows, we're going to go through the presentations, and there'll be questions and discussion afterwards. So, LeAnn, I think you're up next as well, talking to us about the Crisis Response Continuum. So I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. We'll wait till those slides come up.
And while you're waiting for that to come up, the Senator was just reminding me, everyone will get copies of these afterwards, so you'll have them as well.
No, that's right. Oh, there you go. Thank you. All right. So thank you. Candace and I are also going to talk to you a little about McNabb Center's Knoxville and Knox County Crisis and Response Continuum. Before we get started, I want to say there are nine different programs that we're going to talk about. And each of those nine programs, if we did them justice, would take 30 minutes probably at the very least to explain and talk about. So I would ask that you kind of sit back and look at it as a large overview. What I hope to be able to convey is that we have a large continuum that meets, you know, gaps in our service delivery. I'd also say these programs, even though they look very independent, they're not. They are not sequential in their service delivery. They're also not necessarily parallel. What I would say is that an individual can be involved in a few of those programs at the same time. So it's a complex system, purposefully. It is highly medical on one end. When you get into the more of the extended stay programs, the overnight programs, those are going to be heavily medically-based, strongly clinically-based on the other end. So we'll just, we'll kind of walk through that, but I would kind of give you that as a preference. If you'll go to the next slide, before I move further, I want to just take a minute to just remind all of us that, you know, our community has come together on numerous projects that I'm very, very proud of us on. And just as a kind of refresher and reminder and a thank you to everybody in the room here, five years ago, we created the Behavioral Health Urgent Care Center, funded by the Department of Mental Health, the city, the county. It was a large initiative with all of the individuals you see in that, numerous organizations and entities that came together because for a long time, we believed individuals who are revolving in the criminal justice system, we could do better. And we created a true jail diversion program for people who are on arrest and are in need of behavioral health or mental health or substance abuse treatment services and needed a place to go. So I applaud all of us for that. If you look below, you will see our friend Candace Allen and Chief Noel congratulating an officer on their graduation of crisis intervention team training. This is the 11th year we have been providing crisis intervention team training with thousands of law enforcement officers trained. It gives them additional tools and skills when working with individuals experiencing a mental health crisis that they can use. We're also very proud of that and the partnerships that we've made. To the right, you will see the first-ever in the state of Tennessee Children's Crisis Stabilization Unit. We are very proud of that as well. It is embedded in East Tennessee Children's Hospital, and we're serving individuals, children right now, who in the past may needed to have gone to a residential or an inpatient psychiatric facility, and there was a gap in care. And this absolutely is filling that need for children and families in our community. So if you look to the next slide, we start some of the nine programs that we want to talk about. I'll first start with the Mobile Crisis Walk-In Center. I think it's important for you all to know that that is a statewide system. So anybody in the state of Tennessee experiencing a behavioral health emergency can call a mobile crisis unit in their area. And McNabb Center oversees 11 of those counties in East Tennessee. So what I think is very important also to understand is it is a call center, and it is a call center that is staffed to triage crisis. So when a call comes in, and those calls can come from a variety of places. It can be from an individual experiencing an issue. It can be from a family member. It could be from jail. It could be from the children's detention facility. It could be from a school. It could be from another provider. They're reaching out to us for crisis intervention. The goal of that unit is to triage that call. Some of those calls will go to providing information, resources, and that's all that will be provided. But a large number of those calls are coming in when individuals need to have a face-to-face assessment to see if they need to go to an inpatient psychiatric hospital. We respond in person to jails, to the juvenile detention facility, and to schools unless they request a telehealth appointment. We, a large, large majority of these calls are coming from the hospital settings. So it is a face-to-face, done telehealth with emergency departments all around Knox County. That is the vast majority of those calls that are happening. We will respond to private residences and public settings, like streets and things like that. When those calls come in, we do ask for law enforcement assistance. We always prioritize community-based calls first, as those are individuals who are in the need of the most safety. Those are the most safety risk as far as we're concerned. I think it's almost easier to understand, say what we're not. This service is not a first responder. So we're contracted by the Department of Mental Health to be able to provide assessments to adults within two hours and assessments for children within one hour. And to give you a little bit of a sense of the volume, we showed the Knox County number up there. So we're providing face-to-face, no, that includes telehealth assessments, to about 12 individuals each day in need of evaluation for inpatient psychiatric hospitalization from that team. And with that, Candace, you want to talk about co-responds?
Yes, I'll be glad to talk about the Knoxville Co-Response Team, and I know that KPD is here, and we'll also be talking about it as well. So when we started looking at co-response, there are a lot of different models. What we chose to provide was an actual team that is together, partner. So you have a master's-level behavioral health specialist partnered with a crisis intervention team-trained officer, and they respond in tandem to calls. They are partners. So they're responding to calls from the community, crisis calls for people that are in psychiatric crisis and other issues with maybe, you know, co-occurring issues as well. And what I want everyone to hear is, is that when they respond, they are responding with the goals to help someone compassionately and kindly through this crisis, and they have the skills and they're trained to do that. That is the goal, to help that individual that is in need at that time. We currently have four teams. We started out in 2020 with one. It was a pilot, and then three additional were added the next year. We operate from 8:00 a.m. till 11:00 a.m. weekly, throughout the week and the weekends. What we don't have is 24-hour coverage, and we also need additional teams to cover because, you know, you might be on one call and then several other calls will come in. So we need to expand that as well. When I think about the dispositions and what happens when they're out in the field, I would say about 50% of these calls, these individuals are transported to the emergency department because we know that the acuity is so high that a lot of times, they're either going to need inpatient care, so we're going to send them to the EDs because we know they have to have medical clearance. And then also included in that 50% are lower-level crisis programs that we have the continuum available as well, like the Crisis Stabilization Unit and the BHUC. So we have other options. The other 48% that we would talk about are actually able to be stabilized and left at the place of the call. And I really, you know, contribute that to the fact, like I mentioned earlier, of the expertise of these people that are interacting with these individuals in crisis and the caring for them. They are, they have enormous resource, knowledge, and they're able to utilize those. They can make people mental health, behavioral, I mean, mental health appointments, A&amp;D appointments, and help them navigate through the system. They also do follow-ups. It is, we do several follow-ups with our individuals. We, it's not, we just see them in the community and then leave. So we are checking in on them up to several months afterwards.
And while those two programs serve adults and children, we believe that we want to create programs that are unique just for families and children. So what you'll see next is our Family Walk-In Center. I believe we're in the first full year of that. It's very exciting. We created a place for families to bring their child when they're experiencing a behavioral health emergency that is uniquely designed for children. And we wanted to make sure it was extended hours, and so families could bring their children in the evenings, outside school hours, and on the weekends. You know, we didn't know what we would expect to see from that. We have gotten a lot of positive feedback from the community and from parents, really embracing the concept and bringing individuals into our Family Crisis Center. I think it's important also to know that the Family Walk-In Center, while it initially addresses the crisis that they came in for, we have a six-week intensive in-home program that follows that person and child and family so that we can engage them into a mental health center and services. And so it's a nice, warm handoff for families, so they feel like they have a nice safety net. Of course, they're also able to evaluate if a child needs to go to a higher level of care, and we'll talk about that in a minute. The Tennessee Resiliency Project, we call it TRP. It is an additional resource where we embed clinicians in juvenile detentions in East Tennessee Children's Hospital to help assist individuals, children, in those settings as well. We'll go on to the next one.
Okay, the Behavioral Health Urgent Care Center may be well-known to you all as the BHUC. So LeAnn had referenced that before because what I always say about it, it really is a true jail diversion program, and this is not just law enforcement dropping off. These are individuals that were on their way to jail. They have been arrested. There were non-misdemeanors charges that were approved through a process with stakeholders in the community that law enforcement could have a choice to offer them a avenue for treatment as opposed to going to jail. So we're very proud of this program. So when they arrive at the facility, they are seen by a master's-level clinician, a nurse. They are able to stay on the unit up to 23 hours, and you may think that's not a long time, but that's time enough for us to be able to talk to someone, get to know them because they didn't expect to come to treatment that day. So we're talking to them, we're engaging, we're trying to understand what the barriers are for them, you know, what brought them, you know, to the situation that they found themselves in. And I think one of the most important things that's attached to the Behavioral Health Urgent Care Center is our is our ability to provide intensive case management when they leave. It's just offered. It's voluntary. And we call it FACT, our Forensic Assertive Community Treatment Program. And these are case managers that are intensive, that work with these individuals in the streets. Their boots on the ground. The outcomes are wonderful. They help them get into treatment. They transport them. They do a wide variety of things to help them be successful, so.
So next is EMPATH. And if you haven't heard of EMPATH, I hope you leave today knowing a little bit more about what it is. EMPATH is the program that we will place on the grounds of the old St. Mary's Building. It stands for Emergency Psychiatric Assessment, Treatment, and most importantly, Healing Unit. So this is another initiative that our community has been trying to address for several years and working with the area hospital systems to say, individuals are entering emergency departments all across our county in need of psychiatric help. And they're being boarded often in those EDs before they can get to help where they need to be. So our goal is to divert individuals from the ED. So in order to do that, we are building a true walk-in center that individuals can walk in. Family members can bring them. Loved ones can bring them and get immediate access to a psychiatrist or nurse practitioner to start medication pretty quickly so they're not having to wait. The difference in this model is really more of the design and the comfort that is intentional so that individuals are not agitated or having to experience any more barriers than they've already had to experience. So we want to get them in, treat them compassionately and quickly. And then, of course, the most important thing, as with any service that we do, is establish those wraparound services so that when the individual leaves, they are connected and engaged with other services that already exist in our community and that we follow up and make sure those connections actually happened.
Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about crisis stabilization units. You know, we, as LeAnn referenced before as well, we are very happy to have our children's crisis stabilization unit. But let's talk about what, you know, why they are so important. You know, previous to having our CSUs, if an individual was experiencing, a child and adult was experiencing a psychiatric crisis and needed some help, maybe they didn't need to go inpatient. Maybe they didn't need to go to a state hospital, a locked unit. But they had no other option, you know. So lots of times, people had to go to a higher level, more intensive level of care than they really needed. And sometimes, that's not the best thing for them. But you couldn't leave them at home either. So lots of times, that would happen. So we are very thankful to have our crisis stabilization units because it provides that support, that it meets their needs in the services that they need. So when we look at this, someone can come in. It's voluntary. And they are met with a milieu that's very supportive. They meet with master's-level staff. They can have therapy. Their families can come in. We try to gain natural supports as much as possible. There's nursing staffing available. There's groups that specifically are designed for the milieu and what's going on with that individual and that group at the time. And I think when I look at, and also prescriber, we, you know, we're stabilizing people. So we also have a prescriber that can start people on medication right away and continue that when they leave. One of the most important parts, I think, about our crisis stabilization units is the discharge plan. We take every bit of information that we can and we wrap services around that person. And what we are trying to do is provide a treatment pathway for that person. They walk in in crisis and they leave with hope. And our crisis stabilization units do that every day.
The only thing I'd add to that is our adult crisis stabilization is up to five days. Our children is up to 10 days. And we're not saying that we need oftentimes that length of stay, but we're able to provide it if need be. What you'll also see up there is crisis respite. And that is a fairly, fairly new addition. It is a little, actually, the best way for me to describe it is on either end of the CSU stay, for an individual who may need, not the acuity, meet the acuity level of needing a crisis stabilization unit, but they need to stay just a little bit longer because maybe they need shoring up housing or their discharge plan needs to be secured. Or maybe the plan for discharge isn't tight enough at discharge. And we want to keep it one more day to make that secure and happen. So that's a new service we've been able to add through the Department of Mental Health to this continuum. If you'll go to the next slide, I will leave you with this. These are a few of our outcomes for those levels of care and services. What you will see is consistently the goal in these services is to provide the right level of care in the least restrictive setting. So you're going to see outcomes that are looking at divert from psychiatric hospitalization, divert from jail or incarceration. We want to make sure people are engaged in treatment. So that is some of our outcomes. We're very proud of that. And with that, that ends our presentation.
Thank you so much. All right, now we're going to start looking at the current responses that we have as well as additional response options. And I want to welcome Amelia James from Knoxville Heart joining us this evening. And I think Mr. Johnson is going to pull up your slides right now. But welcome. We're glad to have you here.
Thank you. I'm so excited to be here and really excited that we're all here talking about mental health and that there's such an interest in both the city and county to do this. So my name's Amelia James. I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I manage one of our behavioral health programs at one of our community nonprofits. And I have been working as a therapist for the past seven years, primarily with people experiencing significant mental health issues and substance use issues, too. I am a member of Knoxville Heart. So if you want to go to the next slide. Excuse me, one moment. All right, so who is Knoxville Heart? Some of you are very familiar with us and some of you probably have never heard of us before. So our mission is to advocate for an alternative first response team in Knoxville to improve outcomes for people in crisis and reduce demand for police involvement. So what I'm going to be talking about today is alternative response teams. And again, some of you all might know what that is and some of you don't. So this will just be a brief overview. And we also have packets of handouts for you all after this so you can take home. And we're always happy to answer any questions. But basically, Knoxville Heart is a group of volunteer community members. And we've been working together since summer of 2020 to advocate for alternative response in our city. Our group is composed of people with lived experience, those who have been affected by policing and have had contact with the criminal justice system. We also have behavioral health clinicians and other dedicated community members. Throughout the years, some of the things that we've been doing is we've conducted focus groups with the community. We've talked to people with lived experience. We facilitated a community de-escalation training. We've met with various business owners, various government, you know, key government officials, the chief of police. And we've consulted with two alternative response teams across the country. Kahoots in Eugene, Oregon, which I'll mention several times. They have been running an alternative response team for the past 30 years, or 30, over 30 years. And Denver Star, which has a newer alternative response team. And recently, we contributed to the successful passage of two city council resolutions affirming alternative response, which is one of the reasons we're here today. So we're so excited. So if you want to go to the next slide. So what is alternative response? At its core, it is pairing a medic or an EMT with a behavioral health professional who are dispatched by 911 as emergency responders. And they have a van that indicates what they are and a van that's outfitted to meet their needs. So if you want to go to the next slide. So how does this all work? Okay, how does alternative response work? First step is someone calls 911. And the 911 dispatcher has training to triage that call. And if they identify that this call would be appropriate for the alternative response team, they dispatch that alternative response team. And the key thing is that team is dispatched without police. So that is one of the main differences from all the other services, you know, we've heard about today. Now, you do see the police car up there. What is that about? Just because they're dispatched without police doesn't mean there is not collaboration when needed. And so the alternative response team can call for backup if they get into a situation and realize we do need police here. And what we know from other alternative response teams around the country is that they need police backup less than 1% of the time. So hardly ever, but it is there as an option, which is why this is, you know, in some ways, it's collaborative, right? But 99% of the time, they're responding without police. So what is it that that team is doing? First, they can provide things like basic first aid and meet basic needs. They can also do things like provide psychological first aid, crisis intervention, de-escalation. And what we know from some other teams is that about 74% of the calls, the people are able to stay safely in the community. But sometimes, you know, people need higher levels of care. So they might be transported to the hospital, to the CSU, to some of the other incredible services we have in our community. So that is kind of the flow of an alternative response team. So if you want to go to the next slide. So why are we so passionate about this? Why have we, as a group, spent three years of our lives trying to make this happen in our city? So we have four main points. The first is alternative response improves outcomes for those in crisis. So police presence can escalate those in crisis no matter how well-trained that officer is. And we also know that people with serious mental health issues are 16 times more likely to be killed in a police encounter. Research also shows that CIT training, while super valuable, and we're so glad we have it in our community, research shows that it doesn't have significant effect when we look at outcomes like arrest, use of force, or injury rates. So when we're able to meet people's needs with a specialized team, like an alternative response team, we can improve those outcomes. The second point is it saves the city or the county, if they are involved, money. So Kahoots in Eugene, Oregon, saves the city approximately $8.5 million a year. And I think it's important to note that Eugene is similar in budget and population as Knoxville. So while programs like alternative response do require an initial financial investment, they ultimately save millions of dollars. And so like, just think about what Knoxville could do if we had an additional $8.5 million a year. That's pretty significant. The next point is that it reduces burden on police officers. So we had a lovely meeting with Chief Noel. Chief Noel is absolutely in support of alternative response. And he told us that there are so many calls that his officers go out to that do not require them to be there. And so they're having to respond constantly to these calls. We know that police response is expensive. And they're showing up and going, we're not really sure. We don't need to be here. Or this person has mental health needs that are so significant that now we don't, like, our capacity is outmatched. This doesn't mean our skill level. And the department ultimately is really stretched thin. They're having to constantly use overtime. Kahoots in Eugene responds to 17% of all the calls that the Eugene Police Department gets. So imagine how things would change for KPD if they had to respond to 17% fewer calls, like what that would do for the department. And then the last point is that alternative response repairs trust with the community. So many people here might have had really wonderful experiences with police. But I do think we need to be cognizant of the fact that that is not the experience that many people have. Okay, so people with severe mental health issues, people who use drugs, black and brown people, trans people, and others have really long histories of negative experiences with the police. And so for individuals like that, when an officer shows up alongside a behavioral health professional, like in co-response, sometimes what that can do is make that individual not want to seek care anymore and not want to seek mental health care, period. Because now they see that mental health professional coming with police. And that is something that is very scary and threatening for them. Something that Heart learned in our meeting with McNabb is that, you know, one of the main gaps of service is looking at how many people aren't even calling 911, right? How many people in our community desperately need crisis care and support but will not call 911 because they're very scared and often for good reason, unfortunately, of what will happen if an officer shows up? So this is the main gap in service, right? We do not have a first responder system that responds without police. And that is a huge gap when we're thinking about our folks in our community who are dealing with substance use, mental health, who are unhoused, who need care. And so this is why we're so passionate that alternative response could meet that need. If you go to the next slide. So what does an alternative response team respond to? What kind of calls are there? And I want to say, so this is data pulled from Kahoots, which again, they've been doing this for 30 years. What we're proposing is a pilot program, which means we don't have to respond to all of these types of calls right off the bat. We can prioritize. But this is a vision of what an alternative response team could do in our community. So the first is they respond to mental health crises. They can provide things like psychological first aid, crisis care, and de-escalation. They can provide substance use counseling and also dispute mediation and conflict resolution. There are so many times where, you know, tensions are high, people are having a conflict. And if that can be safely de-escalated, people can go on their own way, right? So this mental health crisis, that's where that behavioral health professional really shines. Then we look at basic needs and assistance, things like providing food, water, socks, basic supplies. Also, first aid and non-emergency medical care, things like wound care, basic first aid, and transportation to services. So this is where that EMT or medic really takes the lead, right? And then we look at social services and community support, doing things like welfare checks and connecting people to resources and other referrals. So this is that sort of case management piece. And then the last is general public service. So things like grief and loss counseling or supporting other first responders when they call for alternative response team backup. One thing that happened in Denver is they had this pilot program, Denver Star, going. And the police officer started going, can we have more of this? Because like, we want to call them for backup all the time, right? So this is, again, this is something that like, is not, there is no animosity between any other programs. This is like fitting in another service that could help in our community and that can work collaboratively with our other systems. So you can go to the next. So what is it that we are proposing as Knoxville Heart? What we would really like to see is assembling a task force with key community stakeholders to plan an alternative response pilot program. Cookville actually has just gone through this planning process. And I believe that took them, don't quote me on this, but about a year to plan their own alternative response team. And so it takes time to bring everyone together and figure out how do we want to make this happen. So part of what that task force would do is identify a community partner or an organization with the necessary values and commitment to non-police response. So we really need an organization that shows like, we understand the trauma-informed care, the harm reduction, and we understand why it is so essential that police not be responding alongside this team. The next step would be to launch the alternative response pilot program. In Denver, they did a six-month program. During those six months, they responded to 700 calls and called police backup zero times, hugely successful. Denver then said, we're going to invest several million dollars to expand this team because we love it so much. Throughout this whole process, we would advocate for transparent data collection and dissemination to evaluate the program. So many times, programs are started and then we don't really hear much about them. And we don't really hear about the data and the outcomes. And that is essential for any pilot program, And that is essential for any pilot program, both for transparency and community trust, but also to say like, "How do we improve this program? What's working and what's not?" And throughout this whole process, we value continuous community feedback and emphasizing voices of people with lived experience. You know, I have seven years' experience doing this work. I think I have a pretty good grasp of what my clients go through, but that is not the same as being someone with lived experience. And so those are the voices we have to center in this entire process. And without that, it just will not be successful. Programs like this are not successful without community buy-in. So that is what Knoxville Heart is passionate about, why we care so much about this program. And if you go to the next slide, this is where you can learn more, KnoxvilleHeart.org. We also, Alex is going to pass out packets for you all that have more research, more articles, lots of information, and we are just really happy to answer questions and passionate about getting this program in Knoxville. Thank you.
Thank you so much. If you can hand those to Mr. Johnson, he will hand them out to everybody. There you go. All right. Next up, I'm going to call on Randy Nichols, who's Knoxville, or Knox County Sheriff's, from the Knox County Sheriff's Department. He's the special counsel.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
As a citizen of Knox County, let me say thank you for having this meeting. It's, it's strong. Thank you very much. A couple of things that, from the perspective of the sheriff, a sheriff sends his greetings to everyone he had someplace else to be this evening, but to explain why we're in the situation we're in, we now have, on average, daily, 585 people diagnosed with mental illness. That's on average, daily. We all, in addition to that, we have an additional 52 people on an average, daily basis that have been diagnosed as seriously mentally ill. So as you can see, we're now approaching over half of the jail population suffering from mental illness. I don't know if you have, any of you been there recently? Would invite you, will give you a tour. It is not pleasant. We, we simply do not have the training and the personnel to deal with people that are mentally ill. We just don't have it. When you talk about stuff like this, with people suffering, it's almost embarrassing to bring up the money part of it. But, but Knox County, we're spending a goodly sum of money, on, on average, about $17,000 a month for the psychotropic medications. And if you take in all of our expenses in fiscal year of '23, the citizens of Knox County paid $1,370,800 for drugs to treat the people in the jails. And we ran over our budget allocation last year, and the county commission this year has appropriated $1,303,000 for the drugs that may be needed. This is a crisis that, that's almost beyond belief. And we have simply got to do something, ladies and gentlemen. It's, something has got to give. We, as you know, we're suffering from a lack of staff. The county commission, very generous. We think that's been very positive, by the way. It's not, we're not home yet. We're still short. And with this, the chores of taking care of people that are so sick is, is killing our recruitment efforts. There's not many people that wish to do it. And, and some, without going into any great detail, there are some, of course, that are so sick that it's, it's on a daily basis now. It is almost impossible to deal with them. So, thank you. I appreciate your concern. We need a place, ladies and gentlemen, to put these people other than the detention facility in Knox County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Officer Lawson and Sergeant Williams from the KPD Co-Response Unit to tell us a little bit more about what their experience has been with the Co-Response Unit. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much. It's an honor and a pleasure to be up here speaking in front of members of the city council today. So I'm Officer Matt Lawson with the Knoxville Police Department. I've been on the Police Department for about 15 years now. I started as a co-responder about two years ago when the unit was developed. The, the need for this is very personal for me, and I have lost my brother to suicide. So, mental health does impact everybody, right? So when this unit came to be, I was one of the first in line to say, "Absolutely. Please sign me up." I'm a CIT instructor. I'm a negotiator as well. So when it came to, when we came to be the, at first, there was some hesitance from other officers and people in the community, "How is this going to work? What is it going to look like?" We now have four operable units that run from, seven days a week, from, one unit will run from 8:00 AM till 6:00 PM, and the other unit comes on at 1:00 PM and runs till 11:00 PM. On average, our call times per, per call is about 60 minutes per call. So we respond on a day-to-day basis to multiple calls. Suicidal ideations, individuals who are actually actively suicidal, welfare checks from family members or friends where they have gotten Facebook posts or text messages, or haven't heard from their loved ones in a while that say, "Hey, they, they do suffer from a mental health issue. Can somebody please go, go help?" Our unit responds, and I have a master's-level clinician that rides with me every day. I drive an unmarked police car. We respond, and our job and our goal is to stabilize in the moment, getting that individual out of that peak crisis state, to return people to their normal functioning level, to provide resources. We do so much within the community as a team. It's a partnership. There are many times that these clients or consumers or callers, that they connect with the police. Police, the uniform, this still signifies safety and security. There are times that the, our partners, our clinicians, connect. And those, at those times, the, our partners and our clinicians take, they take over, they take, take control, they, they help guide to the, a positive outcome, to set people up for long-term success. And then there's other times it is a collaboration between the two of us, where we work together with that, with that consumer for their best option. Our unit's very passionate, very successful, and very kind-hearted, I think Candace talked about. But our empathetic understanding of these situations goes deep into our community in that, in that we care. The police care. We care. Our, our, our average of calls since conception is over 2,700 calls for service that Co-Response have responded to. There are a lot of calls that are officer-assist, that those officers, sometimes, they don't have the training or knowledge of the resources. We show up and we provide that. We will take assists in that or actually take over the call. We provide transportation when needed. We do our follow-ups. And the lack of repeat callers that we have is drastically lower than what we actually expected it to be. So that shows that during our follow-ups, as we have connected people to the resources that they needed, that they are achieving that long-term success in which we, we want. And that is reducing our repeat callers. With that, I would just want to say thank you so much, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you guys.
Thank you so much.
Hello, I'm Sergeant Williams. I would say beyond what we can do on the street, my officers are very good at what they do. When we get them to the next level of care, which being, most of the time, is emergency room. I think it's important, as the previous gentleman stated, expanding those resources to long-term care is important. Right now, bed space within the local area is very limited. Most of the time, the clients are waiting several days to make it to the next long-term care. Most of the time, it's muck and bin. However, if we were to be able to, to get some bed space locally, I think that would help reduce the burden on emergency rooms as well.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next up, we're going to hear from Brad Anders, our Knox County Emergency Communications, District E911 Executive Director. Welcome.
Well, thank you. Having flashbacks, actually, for being here. So, thank you for having us. We're, the role that we play in this is we, we answer our calls through 911 and non-emergency numbers for everybody in the county, city and county. And we respond to those calls or send a response to those calls based on protocols from police, fire, sheriff, and rescue. And so, for, you know, we've been called, Councilman Singh has called several times, and we've had conversations, requested information in regards to 988, how we respond to 988 mobile crisis, how we refer out. I hope we've answered those questions thoroughly, but, and asking for data. The data that you're, that has been asked for from Mr. Roberto and Chair DeRae has, has been very difficult for us to, to data mine out of our system because it's not been intentional looking for that data. And so, moving forward, if there's something that you guys want us to, to data mine or to look for in the future calls for service, or what we do in protocols, it, it has to be forward instead of looking back, because there's no way we can data mine what you're kind of looking for in a non-police response. And for us, we would have to have, that, that response would have to come from, or that protocol would have to come from the city or the county or both through an MOU, because we're liable for the services we provide as well. And, and so whoever we're referring clients, citizens to, we'd have to have an MOU through those that we dispatch for. And so that'd be in the city and the county. So that's pretty much our role in the process. We, we took part of the, the last mental health initiative in Knoxville. We're happy to participate however you need us to do that. But to understand our role, we, we respond or send out dispatch based on protocols that are set by the city and the county. So we can't, anybody, anything that we send out has to be sanctioned by one of those two bodies. And so we can't freely contract with anybody else to do that. Technically, by state law, we have, in Knoxville, we've got a great system. Where initially, the, the money that we collect from this, through the phone tariff, is for the 911 call, and the county and the city pay us separately for dispatch services. And so that has to happen on that side of the house for us. But we're more than willing to, to assist. You know my history in law enforcement, you know my history on commission, and I understand the problem on both sides of that. So we're more than willing to help in, in any way. It just has to be a protocol sanctioned by the city or the county for us to participate.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Now, I know that some of our state partners have a, another commitment they have to leave a little bit early, so I'm going to have to let them leave. But before they do, I wanted to see if Senator Massey had anything she wanted to add. Senator Massey?
Thank you, Councilman. Yeah, it is just an honor to be here, to join together, because we're all partners in this same goal, is to address the concerns and the needs of our citizens in Knox County. And I know oftentimes, you know, we are passing and looking at legislation that affects it, but we're working with our partners in the community and with each of you. And I feel like that our delegation has a great relationship with the members of both bodies, and you all know how to Texas call us, holler at us, you know, the whole nine yards. But, but this just is a serious inju, issue. I was honored to serve as a national co-chair of a, or co-chair of a national task force this year, looking at mental health and employment. And it was legislators from all over the country coming and looking at this, these very issues. So it's just something that we all need to continue to work on. Unfortunately, our mental health needs in our community are increasing exponentially, and we just need to, it's kind of like a whack-a-mole. You kind of hit it one place and it pops up another, but we just need to keep working on it. And I think working on it collectively is, is the way to get things done. And I apologize that we're kind of double-committed tonight. We've got another forum-type thing that I think virtually all of us have to be on, so I'm sorry we've got to leave, because I'd rather stay here. Thank you.
Thank you all for joining us. We appreciate you being here. All right, we'll move along to history of local mental health continuum, and we've got Ben Harrington with the Mental Health Association of East Tennessee. Welcome.
Great, thank you very much. I am Ben Harrington. I'm the CEO of the Mental Health Association of East Tennessee. It's a position I've held for 29 years, so my virtue of having more gray hair than probably anyone in the room, that's why I have the historic piece today. Let's lay the landscape, if you could. The federal data, which was not updated because of the pandemic, suggests one in five people in Knox County and in the city of Knoxville would need mental health care. The CDC did have some updated information during the pandemic, which showed about 37% of adults were dealing with anxiety symptoms, and 41% of adults were dealing with depressive symptoms. Also, the U.S. Chamber of Commerce would report that 50% of employees nationally are struggling with their mental health as a result of some of the pandemic issues. The longer those things persist, then they get into my arena, then they get into McNabb's arena, and the private sector mental health arena, because the symptoms don't necessarily receive. What we can tell you is 50% of all mental illness starts by age 14, 75% by age 24, and the children actually have the longest wait time to enter treatment. It's called treatment delay, and their wait time can be easily more than a decade or more before they get into treatment from start of symptom to start of treatment. So that's what the landscape looks like. Next slide, please. So, yeah, I could talk about history of mental health in Knox County for a long time, so I'm going to try to condense this into 15 minutes, and it's going to be tough. So, our history actually starts before the Civil War, when a captain who served in the Revolutionary War bought this property. His name was William Lyon. He bought it from the Cherokee Indian tribe, and then his daughters, after the Civil War, sold it to the state. The state would start construction multiple times and run out of money multiple times. So eventually, we get a piece of property that looked like this in the early to mid 1900s. That's what was called eastern state asylum, if you will. And you can see, it's pretty big. It's pretty big because there are lots of ways people could get into what was the state asylum in those days, and some of them weren't very nice. If a husband was mad at a wife, or someone wanted to steal nice farmland from a relative, if they knew officials, they could grease bombs and get that person committed to the hospital. We ended up having more than 2,000 people in this property at one time. Now, what I will tell you is, back in the day, there were also a lot of private sanatoriums or asylums all across Knoxville. If you went to UT and you walked past the torchbearer, right at that site, there was a private asylum or sanatorium run by a physician. So there were lots of them all across town. Next slide. So let's go past World War II, when a lot of folks came back from the war. Some were traumatized from their experience. Some people had served in healthcare services in the war, and they knew there could indeed be services in the community. And so there was a call for building community mental health services. I apologize for the typo. It was 1946, when Mrs. McNabb and other volunteers in the community approached the city council and asked for funds to start a children's mental health clinic. It would open in 1948, and eventually, in the same year, they would realize they needed an independent organization to advocate for building mental health services in the community. That independent organization was created separately, and that is the Mental Health Association of East Tennessee today. So our roots go back that far. But in the- So our roots go back that far. But in the next, uh, few decades, the earliest stages of building a mental health system in the state and in East Tennessee really started to happen. 1953, Mrs. McNabb, our board members and the board members from the MHA in Nashville lobbied legislators and said, "Let's get mental health out of the Department of Corrections." So the State Department of Mental Health was created. And then, uh, later in the same decade, you would see other places start to open, like in Ridgeview or in Oak Ridge, excuse me, Ridgeview, uh, opened. It's a mental health center there. In, uh, the late 50s, the League of Women Voters, um, in Morristown would open, um, uh, Cherokee Health System. And of course, it would be a while before Cherokee would move any offices and services to Knoxville, of course. Uh, 1963, uh, this fellow here, President John Kennedy, uh, signs the Mental Health Center Act. And it was designed to help fund the development of mental health centers all across, uh, the country. They ran out of money. Okay? Not surprisingly. Uh, but also in the 60s, we started Medicaid and, uh, then that meant we had, uh, to, um, educate physicians at graduate schools of medicine. And so part of that meant some of those dollars were going to pay for that. Over time, those dollars receded. And that's one of the big, uh, factors in a psychiatrist shortage that we still see today. Not enough people going in to those graduate school programs. Late 60s, you start to see, uh, scandals arise at some of the state hospitals across the country. And that leads to the deinstitutionalization movement. And Knoxville's not alone there. Uh, some of you may know the name, uh, Richard Krieg, uh, K-R-I-E-G. He's an attorney. He was a legislator. And he actually visited Lake Shore, uh, when it was named Eastern State at midnight one day in 1971. And they observed all sorts of, uh, nasty situations. And that, uh, caused, uh, a scandal here and caused some reforms to clean up Lake Shore and actually get all of the state hospitals on the path to, uh, being accredited and, uh, getting on a path to really provide good clinical services moving forward. Uh, towards the tail end of deinstitutionalization, um, the state, uh, stepped forward despite limited resources in the early 90s and created mobile crisis services all across the state. Next slide, please. So I'm going to share some pivotal moments that I, I think, uh, you all might be aware of or might not be aware of. Uh, 1994, the state started, uh, TEN Care. TEN Care actually is the largest Medicaid expansion ever in, uh, our country. And it, uh, was launched in, uh, 1994. It invoked managed care principles and service limit to, limits, um, uh, for recipients. Uh, but it also enacted some other problems. UT Medical Center and Children's Hospital both had small psychiatric units. And because they didn't get funded in TEN Care, those things closed. Then Baptist Hospital, Blunt Memorial, didn't have TEN Care contracts and their, uh, Baptist got closed after it merged with St. Mary's. And Blunt Memorial is struggling to this day. And St. Mary's, uh, ended up closing its unit. One of the things that Tennessee had was a waived IMD rule. What, this thing is kind of sexy at the time. Institutes for Mental Diseases, the IMD, uh, letters of the rule. And what it, uh, uh, did not allow was use of federal dollars to pay for inpatient, uh, care at state hospitals. Tennessee, when it negotiated the TEN Care waiver, got that waived. And then what happened afterwards was every state in the country would keep lobbying to get permission for their state to do it. And eventually the feds had to say, "Uh-uh, we're tapping out. And we can't do it." So they had to turn to Tennessee and rescind that rule. That literally led to the huge disenrollments in TEN Care in, uh, the 2000s. So it led to safety, uh, enrollment cuts. It would lead to the Behavioral Health Safety Net. Next slide, please. So another pivotal moment. Um, my colleague, uh, to my right talked about law enforcement interactions. And, you know, Knoxville has had, um, an interesting history here. Sometimes those, uh, law enforcement interactions have gone well. Sometimes they have not gone well. And we have to acknowledge that. But in the 1990s, law enforcement training was really kind of skewed. Uh, folks in the recruit school got 12 hours of mental health training. 10 of those hours were on psychopathic and sociopathic behaviors. Only two hours were on mobile crisis. So what it's literally telling new officers is, guess what? Everyone you're going to encounter is either a psychopath or a sociopath. And that's really overskewing things, uh, because the illnesses are real diagnosable and treatable, treatable. And most people with mental illness live in the community. They're your family members, your friends, your colleagues, your neighbors, et cetera. So it was overskewed. To his credit, Victor Ash, at the time, agreed we needed to reform, uh, police training. And so we led a task force, the MHA led a task force, uh, and we ended up incorporating a PERF model, a Police Executive Research Forum model. 24 hours of training, highly involving family members, persons with lived experience and colleagues like our friends here at, uh, McNabb Center to provide the right type of training so officers could understand mental illness better, so they could recognize it, so then they could start the, uh, diversion process. That is a precursor for all sorts of good things that would happen later, as you can imagine. Uh, it would lead to CIT training, uh, becoming embraced. It would lead to the chief, Phil, uh, our, uh, Dave Roush there, uh, he was on our board at one time, uh, when he agreed to making sure that every police recruit got de-escalation training moving forward. And that's a big deal because every officer needs to have that de-escalation training so that they can de-escalate situations as best as they can. And so it did also lead eventually to the BHUC being established and, uh, the co-response team. Next slide, please. So another pivotal moment. This document dated, uh, 2007. So what we found out after a year of work, uh, was the RMHI task force, uh, realized that a lot of people were being admitted to state hospitals and they didn't need to be. A lot of people with one to three day lengths of stay meant their, their situation, their crisis was not that acute. And it meant that we could do something different in the state of Tennessee. So this is the line in the sand. Before then, crisis services needed lots of help, needed more funding, was not nearly as robust as it could be. It was the favorite place to point whenever there were problems in the mental health system before this date, 2007. After this date, let me tell you, Tennessee has invested a ton of money in crisis services since then. I led, uh, the State Planning Council at the time when this came through. And when this report came out the next year, we got six more CSUs across the state. We've added more CSU since then. But we've also been able to add medically monitored detox units, crisis walk-ins, family crisis walk-ins, and of course now our, uh, newest, uh, resource in town, the CSU, uh, Children's CSU. I put 988 up there for a reason. It's been in existence for a year. But I do a lot of work with, with folks all across the country. And a lot of other states had to go to their legislature and fight to get a telephone fee to pay for enhancing crisis services and, uh, building the 988 system. Tennessee is actually the envy of the nation because we started investing these dollars back in 2008, building CSUs and additional crisis services. Other states are just at that point now. And they've got to start this whole list now. So it's really a, a good situation for us and certainly indicative that times ha- have changed. But that's a pivotal moment that I wanted to point out. Next slide, please. So another, uh, pivotal moment, uh, is in 2016. And this is a TEN Care moment. And it's not a very good one. Uh, TEN Care decided it was going to change some models of operation. Previously, we had case management that was a very traditional form of case management that supported individuals and supported their access to treatment and, uh, helped make sure folks got what they needed. TEN Care changed their model to a care coordination model that they call that. But it's really about linking folks and referring them to stuff. And that's not nearly as effective. So that's, that's changed, uh, the level of, um, uh, support for residents of Knoxville. So next slide, please. So today's challenge is, you know, besides what I would naturally talk about, the need for early intervention because, uh, as a parent, I wouldn't want anyone's kids to have to go a decade or more before they get help. That's a big deal for me and it always will be. But there are other needs. Um, you know, we constantly have folks that think, "Oh, well, Lake Shore closed in, in 2012. Let's just use that money all over again." Well, the state has already done a, a very good job, uh, reinvesting those dollars. And in fact, every nickel of the TEN Care, uh, of the Lake Shore money got reinvested. And what they did was they ensured that the average number of people needing inpatient care would still get care. So they contracted with private hospitals. But then they took the remaining dollars and they contracted with other providers. And they said, "Tell us how you can use that to serve more people." And literally what the state got out of that deal was, uh, $20.5 million, serving about 12,000 people. That's 2,000 people needing inpatient care and 10,000 more people that weren't getting served back in 2012. So that's really proven to be a, a strong investment. However, I will tell you today that hospitals are struggling with staffed bed capacity. That is going to be something you'll hear about over and over and over again. It's not necessarily how many beds do we have in the community. It's staffed bed capacity. Cause you can have 100 beds, but if you're only staffed at 50, guess what? We're not using those other 50 beds. So that's a, that's an issue. Um, we thought that could change some with two private hospitals opening last year. Um, and they're both off of Middlebrook Pike. One's the Knoxville Center for Behavioral Medicine. One is the East Tennessee Behavioral Health. Uh, they're private and they're for-profit hospitals. Um, they take commercial insurance, uh, and they're doing okay there. They do take some TEN Care and they're losing their shirt. They're losing, they're losing about $150 a day for every TEN Care patient they serve. So that, that is a problem. And it's going to be a problem. At some point, they might have to decide, "No, we're not doing it anymore." Um, they also don't serve the uninsured. That is something we need. Um, and so we, we, we can't be clearer than that. Right now, the uninsured, they were supposed to go to, uh, Peninsula, Ridgeview, maybe Woodridge up in, uh, Johnson City or failing any of that Demarcus and bed. The staffed bed problem is an issue at Peninsula and hence we don't have access to all the beds that they've got licensed. Uh, so that's an issue. The other thing, uh, that I want to point out, and this was one that really concerned me a little bit, uh, as we were hearing about the new hospitals coming along and stuff. You know, they gotta staff them somehow. So where are they going to get their doctors and nurses and social workers? And long story short, you can't stop them from, you know, looking at applications. If Amelia decides she wants to look at a job posting, they can't stop her, right? But so there was a little bit of movement from one facility to another. That exacrobated the staffed hospital, hospital bed capacity, uh, at some places. The other thing I would, would say to you is, uh, you will hear more about the behavioral health workforce. Uh, every provider is struggling. Um, there's always, uh, job searches going on, whether it's at McNabb or Peninsula or Cherokee. Um, we have to recruit people for our agency. And it's, it's a lot harder because there are less, uh, of those folks available. Um, also the, um, commercial insurance world. Yeah, someone said, said the term whack-a-mole. If you're trying to find a provider who's taking new insurance, that's high stakes whack-a-mole. Because they might be on the paper, on the list that they will take Blue Cross, but a lot of those folks aren't. And so you've got to keep calling and calling and calling to find some. So this need is a real one. And it's not a today need. We've got to look at how do we solve the behavioral health workforce 10 and 15 years from now. And that's a pipeline issue. How do we incentivize young people to go into the, uh, field? They're noble professions. They do great work. And the folks are indeed heroes in our community. We need to compensate folks well. We need to help with graduate school, uh, scholarships, forgiveness for all the professions, not just physicians. So, the next slide. I think that's it. And, uh, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right. Just like when we had our last, uh, joint mental health care, uh, workshop, we were, we had, um, folks from the Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services join us. We actually had Commissioner Williams join us last time. Um, her schedule wouldn't, wouldn't permit her to join us again, uh, this evening. But I do want to welcome Chief Thornton and Deputy Commissioner Matt Yancey, who have a presentation for us as well. Welcome and thank you so much for being here. And, and thank you for being, for your department being so responsive when we've had these joint workshops. We appreciate it.
Well, good evening, everybody. Uh, as mentioned, I'm Matt Yancey, uh, humbly service Deputy Commissioner with the Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services. Uh, first want to express appreciation to the Vice Mayor, Chair Duratt, for asking our department to come back, uh, this year to this very important conversation. Uh, also want to just publicly acknowledge, um, our partners in the General Assembly who were here just a little while ago. So many of the programs that you'll hear about, that our department funds could not be possible without the support of folks like Lieutenant Governor McNally, Senator Massey, Chairman Zachary. Uh, they have been huge, huge proponents of the work that we do. So wanted to publicly express appreciation to them. Um, I, I will say as a state department, we work and partner with communities across Tennessee. And, and most of them, especially in recent years, have taken a particular interest in behavioral health and, and mental health and substance use issues. Not all of them though have, have taken the approach that this body has where you have engaged city leaders, county leaders, your state delegation. Um, it's really impressive and galvanizing how you continue to bring all levels of leadership together on these issues. So, uh, my hat's off to you for that. Uh, my colleague, Ty Thornton, and I are going to spend the next 15 minutes. We have 45 slides. We're not going to take 45 minutes. So we're going to run through these quickly. Uh, I think everyone's going to have a copy of the presentation. So any questions that you have, we'll be glad to, to answer. Um, I don't have a clicker, so I don't know who's got the steering wheel on this thing. But, okay, we'll go to the next slide. Thanks, Will. Um, real quick, this is our mission and vision. A few words that I would point your attention to. Collaborative pathways, collaborative. So we as a department outside of the four state hospitals, everything that we do is through partnerships with local community partners like the McNabb Center, like the Mental Health Association of East Tennessee, like Peninsula, like Cherokee. Our goals are simple, resiliency, recovery, and independence. Uh, we feel very strongly that people with mental illness, people living with substance use disorder, when they have the right services in place, they can live independent lives in the community. Um, and not just exist, not just survive, but thrive as represented in our vision. Next slide, Will. Uh, this is our preliminary department budget for this current fiscal year. Um, our budget has grown and continues to grow. One of the things that I would point your attention to is that 94.5% of our annual budget, uh, almost 95% go to direct services. So we across state government have one of the shortest, smallest overheads across the enterprise. As you can see, there's 22, uh, I'm sorry, 229 million that goes into community mental health, 168 into our mental health institutes, and 177 to our community substance abuse provider network. Next slide. Uh, wanted to just briefly talk about prevalence of serious, uh, mental illness, serious emotional disturbance. Uh, what I mean by those terms is that these are the, the, the mental health disorders that have profoundly impacted someone's day-to-day functioning. Uh, these are people living with a mental illness that has impacted their housing stability, uh, their ability to maintain employment, um, has often, uh, you know, impacted their family situation. As you can see from the data here, based on estimates, uh, we, we estimate about 7.7% of people in our state ages nine or over are living with a serious and persistent mental illness, are a serious emotional disturbance, the latter being relevant to children. What that means for Knox County, based on your, uh, population, is about 2,800 of those individuals would be folks that we serve as a department. That's one key thing I hope folks take away from our presentation. Our core customer, I think as Ben referenced, are those who are uninsured or indigent. Uh, the chart here breaks that out. Uh, so if there's 33,000 people here in Knox County living with SMI or SED, you'll see 30%, we estimate to be covered by TEN Care. or SED, you'll see thirty percent, we estimate, to be covered by ten care, the state Medicaid plan, sixty percent through commercial insurance plans, and eight point three percent who are uninsured. We're really proud to say, through our behavioral health safety net in last fiscal year, we served thirty-six hundred Knox County citizens, actually eclipsing the amount that we estimate to be uninsured, living with mental illness and, and are, are serious emotional disturbance. Next slide. This is related to substance use disorder, and this one's pretty staggering, because we've seen a significant increase. So you can see, based on NISTDA data from SAMSA, about twenty percent of our state are estimated to be living with a substance use disorder, ages twelve or over. What does that mean for Knox County? That's about eighty-five thousand people in Knox County. You, again, can see the breakout across payer sources. We're estimating about seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty people in Knox County are living with a substance use disorder, of which we served about seventeen hundred last year. We recognize there's a gap on this front, and, and we are working very hard to close that gap as far as increasing access to both treatment and recovery services for the uninsured, living with substance use disorder. Next slide. I'm going to speak briefly about the current model for behavioral health, behavioral health services, as funded by our department. Will, if you can go to the next slide. You can see, it really goes across a continuum. You've heard that word, continuum, several times tonight. We are funding mental health awareness, education, doing a lot of prevention work, specifically along the lines of suicide prevention. Programs focused primarily on the uninsured, and of course, recovery support. I'm really proud of the work that we're to fund across the state and through agencies here, related For this particular population, you can have the best clinical services in the world, but if you don't have those other supportive services in place, a safe place to live, the ability to get a competitive, integrated job, you're not going to be successful in sustaining and recovery. Next slide. The crisis data, I wanted to reference that. I know Leanne talked about McNabb's crisis work. To me, crisis is all about having a person to call, a person to respond, and a place to go. And I think we feel really good, as far as a department, on what we've created here in this local community. You can see the McNabb Center in FY twenty-three, fielded a little over twelve thousand calls. On top of that, Ben referenced nine-eight-eight. We're projecting last year, there was about forty-six hundred calls to nine-eight-eight, which is now the new national suicide prevention lifeline number administered by Vibrance. The number of mobile crisis face-to-face assessments, three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven, and a little over a thousand CSU admissions for fiscal year twenty-three. Next slide. Our substance abuse services continuum, similar to our adult mental health continuum, it goes across prevention, education, treatment, and recovery. We also know that, when it comes to substance use disorder, I always talk about, often a common symptom of having a substance use disorder is interface with law enforcement. In our department, we really proud to partner with county governments across the state on recovery courts. We'll talk here briefly in a minute about the new mental health court. We're excited to partner with Knox County on. It's a really important element of what we do. We work with providers to fund criminal justice liaisons, individuals who are uniquely trained to work in jail settings, to help people, once they re-enter the community, find treatment, find a place to live, and, and be set up for success. We partner with agencies like Cherokee, EMG Jelenic, here in Knoxville, McNabb, Park West, Susanna's House. If you're not familiar with Susanna's House, I would encourage you to read up on them. We've been doing a lot of work with them recently, here in Knoxville. Next slide. Ty will talk about hospital services here in a minute, so I won't spend any time on that. We'll go to the next slide. Wanted to, this is important, because we wanted to break down, similar to what we did last year, Vice Mayor, to show the funding that we are providing to providers in Knox County. If you go to the next slide, you'll see in fiscal year twelve, it was eight point seven million dollars. So that was eleven years ago. If you go to the next slide, you'll see that that amount has increased to, to this fiscal year, to fifty-five million, two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars. I won't go through all of these various programs, but these are dollar-supporting programs here in your community, with providers in your community. Next slide. This is just the second page of that breakdown. You can see the diversity in programs that we're funding for people here in Knox County. If you go to the next slide, you'll see the percentage increase. It's about five hundred percent in the, in the past eleven years. And again, this is why I started my talk with expressing appreciation for folks in the General Assembly, because they continue to invest in this important work. I'd also be remiss to say that our team, back at the department, are very successful in writing federal grants. So we get a lot of federal grant money, whether it be through SAMSA, through the Department of Justice, and, and we don't keep that money. That money comes to local communities like Knox County. So this is something that we're really proud to report on. Next slide. Ty is going to talk more at length here about our hospitals post-Lakeshore closure. If you go to the next slide, though, this is a, we call this the Senator Massey spreadsheet at the department, because it breaks down how each of the dollars that we committed to maintaining in Knox County from the Lakeshore closure, it's just a little north of twenty million dollars, continues to be funded for these programs that were identified by the community partners subsequent to the closure of Lakeshore. You can see from this, this slide, that we break it down by year. So you'll see each year, the number of people who are being served in these programs. If you, Will, if you go to maybe the last slide on this, yes, the bottom-line numbers is what I would point your attention to. So in FY thirteen, there were forty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-nine people served through these programs, through these reinvestments. In fiscal year twenty-two, we're still finalizing some of the twenty-three data, but in fiscal year twenty-two, eighty-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-two. So more people are being served here in Knox County post-Lakeshore. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Chief of Staff, Ty Thornton.
Thank you.
Good evening. As Matt, my colleague, was saying, my name's Ty Thornton, and I serve as the department's Chief of Staff and Chief of Hospital Operations. So I've been with the department for about thirteen years, and I will say that it has drastically changed in those thirteen years, and I would not want to work anywhere else. I really, really have a heart for what we do, and we're going to continue to do great things in the future. I just want to be a part of that. So, but if you could go ahead and move to the next slide, the slide after that would be, this is going to show you the comparison here of private contracted and state regional mental health institute admissions from the former Lakeshore catchment area, which was a twenty-four-county catchment area. Lakeshore, the last year that it was in operation was fiscal year twenty-eleven. There were two thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-seven admissions to Lakeshore during that time, I'm sorry, during FY eleven. And in this last fiscal year, that ended June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, there were a total of two thousand, eight hundred and one admissions. So as you can see, admissions from the former Lakeshore catchment area, FY eleven to today, there's twenty-five percent more individuals who are receiving inpatient psychiatric services than whenever Lakeshore was in operation here. And it's broken down there, and that's obviously not our total admissions on that right-hand side from all of the catchment areas. That is just specific to the twenty-four county catchment area that Lakeshore formerly served. Next slide, please. Okay, so if you look at the statewide psych hospital bed availability, this is very important, because, you know, we look at what we were at in, this is calendar year twenty-eleven, that was two thousand, five hundred and nine psychiatric hospital beds in Tennessee. And then twenty-twenty-one, the reason I say twenty-twenty-one is, we call it the JAR report. It's the Joint Annual Report on Hospitals, that's released in, it's going to be about two years in, based on data, that's about two years in arrears. So the most recent report was released by Department of Health, the THA, in October twenty-twenty-two. So we give it a couple of months, and we should have a new report that'll be based on twenty-twenty-two data. But that was thirty-six point twenty-three percent increase from twenty-eleven to twenty-twenty-one. So there, at the end of that note, want to point out the fact that there's actually approximately seven hundred, I'd say seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty unstaffed beds in Tennessee. So that means that the hospital is licensed to operate three thousand, four hundred and eighteen beds there, but about seven hundred of those are currently offline for various reasons. But one of the biggest reasons is, we can't staff all the beds. You can have all of the beds that you want, but if you can't staff them, they're not really any good to you for that purpose. All right, so moving to the next slide. Okay, so Moccasin Bend Mental Health Institute admissions from the twenty-four county area that was formerly served by Lakeshore, I would have put in the numbers there, but it was, it was going to all run together. If I did, so I'll just give you the last two numbers here for Knox County. As you can see, that's, that is the, the largest trans, I'm sorry, the largest admissions county that we have for the twenty-four county catchment area. And it's, it stayed fairly consistent. In FY twenty-two, there were two hundred and forty-eight admissions to Moccasin Bend from Knox County. That number for the last fiscal year, for, I guess, FY twenty-three, is two hundred and forty-two. So from two forty-eight to two forty-two. Next slide, please. All right, so going on to the total number of individuals who are transported by Knox County, by the Knox County Sheriff, to Moccasin Bend in FY twenty-three. As you can see there on the far right, there were two hundred and fifty-three individuals who were transported to Moccasin Bend, and only eleven of those were not admitted. So that's approximately one individual a month, and I'd say, less than five percent were not admitted. That's still too many, and we are working to address that. Whenever they have to go down to Moccasin Bend, to Chattanooga, and an individual is not admitted, that, that obviously takes time and resources. So in order to address that, what we've tried to do is, we've implemented a large initiative that deals with telehealth evaluations. So I'll get to that in just a minute, but that's the reason why we've been able to get that down to eleven non-admits. Next slide, please. Okay, so the next slide shows you Knox County transports that are coming from the jail to Moccasin Bend Mental Health Institute in FY twenty-three. There were a total of fifty-one transports to Moccasin Bend that originated from the jail in Knox County. Twenty-two of those were forensic patients. So forensic would be competency, like court-ordered competency evaluations, or mental capacity at the time of the offense, those type of, of inmates who have, are facing criminal charges. They go to Moccasin Bend for up to thirty days for inpatient forensic evaluation. Next slide, please. Okay, this slide here is East Tennessee private facilities, the total discharges there. So it's going to show you the number of individuals who were served by the three contract hospitals. We've got Peninsula, we've got Ridgeview, and then we've got Woodridge. So in fiscal year twenty-three, I mean, as you can see there, the, the numbers have decreased. They've certainly decreased, the totals there. But, so for FY twenty-three, it was a total of two thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven individuals served by the three contract hospitals. That number has decreased from FY twenty-two, where there was two thousand, four hundred and ninety-five individuals served there. We attribute that to the investments that our department has been able to make in community services and supports. We're going to continue to do that, because the, the data tells us that it's definitely working. Whenever you have the most restrictive, the most restrictive resource out there with fewer admissions, and then you see that our community supports are actually thriving on that. So, next slide, please. All right, so East Tennessee private facilities, uninsured average length of stay. So average length of stay for these individuals is shown there for FY twenty-three on the right. Collectively, that would be about four point, I got four point eight-three, is the average length of stay there. So right at five days. Next slide, please. All right, this shows you the total admissions from FY two thousand and nineteen to FY two thousand and twenty-three, at all four of the regional mental health institutes. This data also matches the data that we just saw for East Tennessee contract hospitals, the discharges there. As you can see, this actually does have the total there, and it's, we've continued, we've continued to see a decrease in inpatient hospitalizations there, too. Again, we attribute that to the large investments that we've been able to make in community services and supports. As you can also see there on the far right, the, I guess it's the maroon column, even though Middle Tennessee Mental Health Institute is our largest facility, Moccasin Bend, in this last fiscal year, served the most, they had the most admissions of any of the RMHI's. So they, they're certainly, they're, two thousand, three hundred and forty-nine individuals admitted to Moccasin Bend in the last year. Next slide, please. All right, I'll turn it back over to Matt Yancey. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll be brief. You've heard about the kids CSU here in Knoxville. I've been in Tennessee for eight years, and since day one, we've been hearing a lot from people across the state that we need children's CSUs. McNabb and East Tennessee Children's Hospital decided they were going to do it on their own. And so they, they've done that successfully. We were able, as a department, to be able to help with some of the infrastructure funding, as you can see. But I, I feel like the program has been so successful that this fiscal year, we've actually received funding to help stand up two new children's CSUs, one in the, the middle grand division, one in the west grand division. But it's really inspired by the work of McNabb. I think they've done a great job on this project, and the CEO for East Tennessee Children's Hospital has just been a huge advocate for it. Next slide. You've heard earlier about the Empath Unit. This was a directed appropriation. You can see the funds that have flown through our department to this community for the Empath Unit, broken down by capital and operations. I believe this funding's in place for three years. Obviously, it will be at the St. Mary's campus. This is going to be a huge addition to the continuum. Talking about sequential intercept mapping, this is an intercept point, and we are definitely looking forward to seeing this open up soon. Next slide. Here, recently, really within the past few months, our department's also funded McNabb Center with a four-million-dollar one-time grant to help expand their residential detox services. I believe that's going to be at Center Point, if I remember correctly. And the completion of these new beds would be the end of June of two thousand and twenty-four. As you can see, there's other providers here locally that we have recently invested in to help expand infrastructure. So those are some key themes you're probably hearing. We need more infrastructure, we need more staffing. The other thing that's not in these PowerPoint slides is that the legislature has provided our department almost forty million dollars in the past two years for provider rate increases. As Ty mentioned, you can, you can have the infrastructure, you can have the beds, but if you don't have the, the professionals to staff them, you can't serve people. And, and one of the things that we know within the public behavioral health system is, you've got professionals who have historically been woefully underpaid for the important work that they do. So these provider rate increase funds are going to all of our providers across the state. An early indication is that it is helping with recruitment and helping with retention, but we certainly have a lot more work to do on that front. Next slide. I remember last year, I was asked about the Knox County Mental Health Court. I was speaking to our Director of Criminal Justice Programs earlier today, Rebecca Provost Emmons. She said that Judge Cerny will be overseeing the new mental health court. I know he's been with the Recovery Court here in Knox County for a while, as well as the Veterans Treatment Court. And as you can see, referrals, we're, we're expecting to be starting in mid, mid-August. This, this is another example of Knox County leading the way in trying to address people who interface with the justice system in, in a better way, especially those who commit low-level, non-violent offenses with behavioral health issues. Last slide, I believe it is. Last slide, I believe it is, I'm not sure if Karen Pershing's here, you probably know that name, she's the Executive Director of the Metro Drug Coalition. We've talked a lot about treatment, we've talked a lot about recovery support, crisis services tonight. Really want to give a shout out to what Metro Drug Coalition's doing and has done for so many years to prevent substance use. This Gateway Program is their new recovery community. If you've not visited the Recovery Center, I would encourage you to do so. You can see the services that it provides to people in recovery. This is a project that we also help fund, both with infrastructure dollars and continued support with operation dollars. And the last slide, the next slide, is a link to our website. We're doing so much great work, but we couldn't do any of it without the partners that we have, like the ones in this room. So thank you so much, Vice Mayor, Chair Duratt. Thank you, and we will stick around for any questions.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the, the presentation and you coming to visit with us here a second time. So thank you so much for doing that. Okay, that moves us on to the questions and discussion, and I know that our, our, our county and city folks are going to have lots of questions they have and lots of discussion they want to have. We're getting close to having been doing this for two hours, which is, is a good thing. We had a lot of information to go over. So we're going to have three minutes by agreement from Chair Duratt and myself for everyone to, to speak. I would ask that everyone, when you do ask questions, make sure you turn on your lights, and I'll try to call on everybody as I see them come on. And, you know, we'll try to, we'll try to get everybody in, in the order that I see the lights come on. And if you could, try to keep your questions to, maybe not so many compound questions, but so we can, I want to make sure I get to everybody. So, so as soon as I see some lights come on, I will start making some calls. Oh, are they not working? Well, then, I guess raise your hand if the lights aren't working tonight. It'll be like school. Commissioner Beeler, did you want to say something?
I would love to. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I, I really don't have any questions. I just wanted to sort of give a summation of my thoughts and listening to everybody, and, and kudos to those who have presented and been represented by those who presented because it's, it's great to see how many people are out there getting it done every day. And it's been really honestly amazing to hear about some of the services that are available and some of the services that are possible and could be made available in the future. Amazing and encouraging to hear how much the investment from the state has increased. That was very enlightening over the past 10 to 12 years. I, I think it's, it's easy to see that there is a lot being done, and there's a lot more being done than has ever been done. But I think it's also true that we need to do a lot more. And there, there are two words that have just really been reverberating in my spirit the past couple of days, and especially since yesterday when I was talking with Vice Mayor Roberto, and the two words are unity and urgency. And I, and I'm, I'm an optimist, okay? So, so maybe this is optimistic, but I just really believe that this is an issue that, that we can unify. Like the Vice Mayor said, we could make a laundry list of things we disagree on. There's probably not, probably not two people that agree on everything in, in any of these bodies. But, but I think one thing we can agree on is that this is an issue, this is a problem. We have got to, to take on together and make real progress for our community, and I think we can do that. The urgency piece, I still think there's an elephant in the room. I still think there's a big missing piece of this puzzle. And General Nichols, I think, paved the way for that by saying we've got to do something. And, and we do. And I really believe that there is a desperate need for more government-funded and staffed beds for long-term mental health inpatient treatment. And, and I know staffing's an issue, that's part of the elephant. And I know greater investments have been made, that's all part of it, too. But I, I believe Knox County will step up to the plate and do everything we can to do our part. I believe our colleagues at the city will do the same thing. And, but the truth that we all know is that in order to lift the whole elephant, we need the muscle of the state. And so I'm confident and encouraged by Senator Briggs and Senator Massey, Governor McNally, Representative Davis, Representative Zachary being here, and we all need to reach out to them and to Representative Johnson and Representative McKenzie, Representative Lafferty, Representative Wright, all of us with a collective voice, need to reach out and say, we need long-term government-staffed and funded beds in Knox County. We are fast approaching a metropolitan area of a million people. We are the third largest in Tennessee. We're not getting any smaller. In fact, we're probably gaining on one, if not both, of the two ahead of us. If East Tennessee had a capital, it would be Knoxville. If Appalachia had a capital, it would be Knoxville. This region depends on Knoxville having this service available. So I'm confident we're going to move forward together and make it happen. So I'll yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I couldn't agree with you more, and I think we've heard a lot today from a variety of presentations that we heard from that really kind of make that very clear to us. Want to make sure, and I'm sorry that our, I'm sorry that our lights are off. I see Councilmember Parker has a question. Go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And, and thank you to you and both Chair Duratt for organizing this joint workshop. I do, I feel like tonight, we've had a really good conversation, and it was helpful to get an update since our last joint workshop on this topic, which I was not able to join you all last time. I was under the weather, but actively watching at home and a, a couple of times after that. And so there were a couple of things that stood out to me in this presentation, particularly that the number of beds available in our community have increased, but the number of admissions have decreased. And what came from that presentation is attributing that decrease to investments in community services and supports. And that is encouraging for me to hear because that is also the data that was shared at the last workshop and the data that many of us are working on, working from, that motivates us to, to propose our city look into an alternative response program that would be able to have an EMT respond to those calls along with a behavioral health specialist and be able to divert some of our calls that are going to the emergency department. I believe it's about 40% of those calls going to the co-responder team are ending up in the emergency department, and so that's still a gap that needs to be addressed in terms of stresses on our emergency system and needs for other community services that can address that issue. So we have limited time tonight to give a response. What I would encourage is that this conversation and planning continue. One reason I would like to see that happen in a space where there can be a more collaborative discussion, like a task force, is so that we can actually identify items that are immediately actionable now that we can move forward. I would hate for us to return to this space for another update without finding ways that we can take action together. So I'm continuing for us to consider the benefit that an alternative response program could, could provide for our city and possibly our entire county.
Thank you very much. Councilmember McKenzie.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to echo my colleagues and Commissioner Beeler's comments. This was a really good update on where we are in some of the investments, and while we've seen increased investments, we also cannot dismiss the fact that we are also seeing increases in our homeless population to almost a crisis point, as well as our mental health, you know, capacity of the people who are in our city and in our county. One of the things that I'd written down before we got to the end of it was expand capacity of services and beds. And what I took away is that there are beds that are out there, there are more beds, and they're unstaffed. And so now it, you know, begs to ask the question, you know, what can we do to incentivize people to go into the mental health field to be able to have those beds staffed? Because absolutely, we cannot have people in beds that are not staffed where they are getting the adequate treatment, rather than just, you know, housing which is not safe for them or anyone else. Also, again, when we, you know, hear the statistics about, you know, people who are being housed, who are mentally ill and need those services and, you know, correctional facilities, and that's absolutely not the place for them. When we see the statistics of people who are being driven to Moccasin Bend, and they get there and they're not certified, well, that's about an hour and 45-minute drive for someone to probably de-escalate. But can you imagine how that person must feel driving an hour and 45 minutes back to probably a correctional facility when they've not been admitted into the services that we know that they need so desperately? And so there's still a lot of work to be done. I appreciate what, what we've heard today, but there's still so much more work to be done, and I applaud the efforts of everyone that showed up today. I really wish that our state colleagues could have stayed for the entire session to hear some of these additional statistics and the comments. But again, we need everyone at the table and everyone working together collaboratively and collectively. As we look at our population growing, so is the state of homelessness and mental health crisis in this city and county. Thank you.
Mayor Roberto, I could answer the question about incentivization.
I, I think that's a good thing to do.
Okay. So the average nurse gets out of graduate school with $50,000 of grad school debt. The average social worker gets out of graduate school with $50,000 of graduate school debt. And so the first piece of any incentivization program should be offering an off-ramp for those healthcare professionals to be able to get their degree and be able to then enter the field without the debt. So, you know, I would try to use lottery reserves because it's an educational program, and that's what those things are, they're educational degrees. The second thing would be to offer those people sign-on bonuses to be signed on to work in the public sector, and I would tier the sign-on bonuses. Higher amounts for public sector work, tie them to five years of commitment to work in the public sector, and then offer them a retention bonus out of a retention pool. All of this is not a, a strange thing at all. The Commissioner of Mental Health has been very astute on this and proposed this sort of thing for the past two years in her state budget. But we knew, do need to do that, but we also need to dial it up a little bit forward, too, to get people to go to college and pursue those degrees. We have to be talking to young people where they are, in middle school and high school and career fairs, promote the professions as honorable. These kids are not dumb. They know their family members are struggling with these conditions, and that is usually the motivating factor for most people who get in the business. So if we promote it early and show them how to get their degree, get the, the degree paid for, that sort of thing, that will incentivize people. The other thing is we have a scarcity of professional, mental health professionals of color. Knoxville is not very diverse, and we got to have some resources to recruit professionals of color and be able to snatch them away. Those folks are choosing Chicago and Memphis and Atlanta because it, it's more culturally diverse, and we need to have something that makes us stand out. And that's where I go right back to that whole pool of resources to incentivize people. And we need that in our community as well to try to break some of that logjam. If you had that, then you could speed up the whole mental health pipeline piece. Otherwise, you're dealing with just, you got to incentivize kids to go to school, and that's a 10, 15-year pipeline. So if we could have both, that would be marvelous.
Those are great suggestions. Unfortunately, the people who are some of those decision-makers are not sitting up here in this room right now. And I think also you had a great suggestion as far as the Tennessee, the state lottery dollars, but also the sports betting dollars that, that are sitting out there at the, in the billions that could also be used.
Or the opioid abatement council money, too. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's a great, a great answer, and just like Councilmember McKenzie was saying, our state friends may not have been present, but there's probably ways that we could send them a message about those things together. So that's, that's very good. I also saw a light from Commissioner Oster. Commissioner Oster.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Chairwoman Duratt, for putting this together. And I want to thank everyone who is in the field, boots on the ground. This cannot be an easy job, and I respect every one of you for having to do what you're doing and stand in the gap. I am going to have to reiterate what Commissioner Beeler said. I completely agree that, obviously, Knox County Commission and Knoxville City Council, like we're doing tonight, have to come together and work together because I believe that we can all come together on a common goal for this. My issue is when I listen to General Nichols, and he'll always be General Nichols to me, but he said that average on a daily basis, they're dealing, the police officers are dealing with 545 people, 52 of those are serious mental illness. If I did my math right, if we do that on a daily average, that's 217,905 people in our community that are sick, hurting, dealing with, dealing with a serious mental issue. When I say that I believe we're past the time, years past the time of having a mental health facility in Knox County, I believe that's probably an understatement. I cannot imagine being the patient who is having to drive an hour and a half to an hour and 45 minutes to go to Chattanooga, and also can't imagine being the police officer that is transporting this person. When you're in a mental health crisis, nothing to that patient is real at that time, and that, that is extremely concerning, that, that we are expecting our police officers to, to do that on top of what they're doing in the jails and what they're doing on the streets, and then putting our patients, our community members, in this situation. So it's something that I plan on speaking to my state reps about, all of the state reps about. This needs to be a, a huge priority this coming next session, to be talking about this and not talking about it. Put the money where the mouth is and get the work done. And I'm willing, as a county commissioner, to step up and do that. But I just also want to thank the police officers are here. I have gotten to know Chief Noel Well, a very fine man, and is out working hard in his community in the city. And I appreciate Sheriff Spangler for the work that he's doing in the county. I know you guys have a really hard job, so I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Sane.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I appreciate these last couple hours very much. I feel like we've had a top-to-bottom, side-to-side view of some of the large issues that are going on. But I would like to pull back some to where council started on getting this together, which, to me, the crux of the problem is we have put mental health and dangerous criminal behavior in the same basket, and we are here to look at who should respond when there is a mental health crisis versus a criminal activity. It amazes me to, to have heard Mr. Harrington talk about in '53, we separated the Department of Corrections with the Mental Health, and we're still working on it. We've got, you know, B. Huck, I think, is working on trying to separate those issues. The co-responder model is. We have Mental Health Court coming up soon. So back to the intercept map that we had, that is about getting mental, mental health, mentally ill folks out of the criminal justice system at different points. And this, to me, this is not about, somehow this has all become about law enforcement. And I'd like to see us at the intercept of zero, where law and And I'd like to see us at the intercept of zero, where law enforcement, it's community and not law enforcement, that has, has something that, that doesn't belong in their basket, right? There are, there is an overlap between mental health and dangerous behavior, but that's not, it's not one-to-one. It's very little bit. So, how do we move forward? I don't want to have this meeting and then have another one. Two years ago when we met, now the problem's even larger, right? So, I'm wondering about the funds for coresponder and what data and information do we need to start working on other crisis response teams? I know that for the responder model, you guys had five years of data and information. For B. Huck, it was 10 years. What do we need to get started on this?
I guess I'll try to answer that one. You know, I think what we have learned over our conversations and meeting with Heart and some other providers is that there's a lot of information that is coming to us that we don't collect data on. We hear and absolutely understand and embrace the fact that there are individuals who are afraid to, to call for service for, for fear that, that law enforcement will respond. That's a very real fear. We also know that, I think it's, I think it's challenging for us, as Brad talked about a little bit, about when the calls are coming into 911, distinguishing which of those could be calls that an alternative response could respond to versus a caller that might need a higher level of response, like a co-response team. So I really think what we've been talking about is taking the time to step back and find out what are, what is the data points that we need to collect. We understand that we have to collect those going forward to find out how we need to establish and develop a response that meets the needs of all of our citizens, not just that, that few.
So where would we collect this data? Who would be collecting the data? And would the, yeah, let's start there.
You know, I think that's up to this group. I mean, I think, in all fairness, I think it's, it's, it's everybody, right? I think that everybody has the data in their own agencies and entities, and that's got to be collected and compiled together somehow.
When you were getting the data together for the coresponder model, who led that? And, yeah, who led that?
So McNabb led that on the coresponder part. We developed an app to follow all of, together data on all of our calls post-intervention. So we have that. We're really proud of that data, and we have used that to, to develop and enhance and change the program as we go.
And KPD.
KPD also collects data on their end.
And then you would need assistance from 911, 988, all of these sources.
All of, all of the points, I mean, I think that we have to decide all of the points where individuals are intercepting into the system. And then somehow, we're going to have to talk to providers who are serving individuals who can give us the data on the numbers of individuals who are afraid to call and would utilize a different service level. Because I think that's something, you know, that's hard to, that's hard to capture, but it's very real out there. So I think we've got to talk to the other providers in the community on how to do that. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, and I would just say, like, I think we're all in agreement that alternative response is a need in our community. Maybe that's, I'm overstating that, maybe I'm hopeful in saying that. But I think there is an urgency here. Like, the longer we wait to implement alternative response, the, the more time we have to have negative outcomes. So I don't, I'm worried that this is going to be like a very extensive, like, slow time of data collection, and should we do this and how do we do this? And this is why I think a task force of getting everyone in the room and saying, okay, here are all these community providers. We have so many smaller mental health agencies, like the one I work at, that like are not in the room often, but have incredible information and data as well. So like, this is why I hope we can work with some urgency to say, like, like, let's, let's agree that alternative response is needed, and like, let's take the next step to make it happen, and let's create a timeline to make it happen.
I agree with the urgency, but I also see this as, we're just, we're beginning some foundational things that, that is going to continue for years and years. 911 started in 68. So, you know, 50 years ago, that started, 988 started last year. So it's going to take some time to build up all of our systems, and I want us to be able to do it correctly in what the society needs. There are a lot of different crisis models. There are some where after the police officers have gone to the same place 10 times, then they start sending out crisis response teams. I mean, there are many different ways of doing it. So I guess I want to make sure that we're doing it community-specific with all of the partners involved with data and buying into it. So I'm not trying to, I don't want to have another five years of data, but we might need to have a couple of years, maybe a year worth. This meeting is not about making any decisions, but if it were up to me, I would start trying to fund somebody to do this data collection. Yeah.
And I'm going to have to interrupt just real quick because the time has expired, but I do have other folks on, on the list. But good discussion, so I wanted to, to let that, let that go for a little bit. The one thing I would, I would add to that is, I think we did hear from Mr. Anders about E-911, and he said that they have a lot of data, but they haven't mined that data. And it seems to me like that might be a good starting point for doing exactly what you were saying. Well, and, and here he is.
Yeah, so real quick on data, that we have a ton of data points. But when you're looking, so if someone calls in and says, hey, there's a, there's a person walking down the middle of a gay street with no clothes on yelling at people, that could come in as a disturbance and not a mental disturbance, right? So what we have, what we have is raw data. When somebody calls in, it may not be what's really going on when there's a responder there. And so, there's, there's raw data that we can find that, that may or may not be sufficient for what you need, but there's also what the outcome of the response is as well. So it, you know, it could be, come in as a party call, and it's a domestic disturbance, right? So we never get that data. We only know that they made a report, but we don't know what that report is. So our data, we can, we can find you some data, but we want to make sure it's pertinent data, and we don't know what we're looking for right now. But we're more than, we're more than willing to look at all of our, our data, this public records especially.
So that might be a way that the, our group could work together to help bring about that kind of a study, and you could, we could have somebody look at the data and then let us know. I mean, can you give us a sense for, real quick, what the number of calls you get for E-911 are in Knox County in a year, and how many of those are non-emergency calls?
So we answer approximately five, around 580,000, almost 600,000 calls a year. And some of, a little over half of those generally trend toward non-emergency, the 10-digit lines. The 911 lines are, account for a little bit less than half of our calls.
Thank you so much.
And each agency, I'm sorry, each agency has various 10-digit lines that come into us, animal control, police has a non-emergency, sheriff has a non-emergency, fire has a non-emergency. All those, fire may not have one that, that comes directly to us, but most agencies do have a 10-digit that comes to us, and we also provide that service and answer those. And you, and some of those may be through, going through 311 as well, that, that may go from 311 straight to the Police Department Co-Response Unit, and we may never see it. So there's, there's a ton of data out there. It's just a matter of what do you need and, and how do you want to get the finality of the response?
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Ryder.
Yeah, I want to thank everybody that was able to be here and present information to us. I know we've all done that. This is literally not even the tip of the iceberg, so I think that's what the big challenge is for me, is that this has been so broad and so much information, but yet not even like the sprinkles on the cupcake. There's no way we can cover it all. So, so that in itself is kind of frustrating, too, because we could honestly spend days talking about all of these issues. And I know everyone up here, if we all won the lottery, we would spend all our money trying to solve all of our problems, but that's the thing, is that we, that, that's not the issue that we have. I'm going to, it's like, we have very limited time, and how do I use it? So I'm going to launch off of something that Councilwoman Singh started with. I think, you know, there's, there's some comments, and we can talk about, we have all these inmates who have mental health illnesses, and they end up in jail, and maybe that's not where they belong. And I think part of the issue that we started with is, how do we avoid that circumstance? Or how do we avoid the circumstance of a suicide? Or I've had three incidences in one neighborhood within just over 24 hours in my district in the past day-ish plus. One was a drug deal gone wrong, and there was a shooting. One was a death on the sidewalk from a drug overdose. And the other, I've been told, I don't know too much about it, is a murder, and I'm not sure. But we could conjecture that maybe there was some crisis going on there that led to that. Who knows? Maybe a drug deal. I don't know. So there's a lot of needs in our community, and this ties up our police, and it ties up our services. People lose their lives, people lose their friends, their family members, and then the community members around them feel endangered. So I think, you know, we've talked about 50,000 problems here tonight, and it's like, how do we talk about something that we could actually, you know, have an ask about to walk away with? And I think where we started as council and how we ended up coming to the table again with everyone, is we have things that go on in our community that maybe we could have additional response to and try to intercept things before the crime or whatever happened that ended them up into the jail. And I don't take away from the fact that that's really, really a terrible reflection of our society, that we have a bunch of people with mental illnesses that are in jail instead of in some kind of care. But how do we maybe intercept some of that before it gets to that point? So I think my question to you guys, because I'm going to run out of time here, is, we've talked a couple of things about how you start and data collection and all that stuff. I'm going to ask you to talk about mobile crisis, because I feel like that's kind of a service that we have that exists, that could morph or go. I feel like the name of mobile crisis started as to be mobile crisis, go out and respond, but yet it never has been able to be that. And it's both people can call in as well as providers can ask for it. So tell me if I'm right or wrong, is that some direction that we could kind of build upon or expand upon how that might respond to, I don't know, the 85, almost 1,000 Knox Countyans with a substance use disorder, or the people in crisis that are trying to use mobile crisis? LeAnn, I threw a giant one at you, so maybe...
I'm going to try.
Okay.
I'm going to try to answer that.
I don't know where to go in three minutes.
Well, okay, I'm going to try to answer that, and I'm, I'm going to ask your help on that, too. A couple of things came to my mind as you were talking. One is, I think we're talking about a very broad target population. So it's hard for me to answer what's the best intervention when we're talking about individuals, I believe, that need food, assistance, transportation to individuals who are having a domestic violent incident on the side of the road that might be substance use disorder related, who also might have a mental health situation going on. So all of those interventions, in my mind, are different. Is that fair? So, so the intervention I would do on one end would not be the intervention I would do on the other. And I think what's the challenge here is, how do we know what is happening in real time? And can we really get information so that we can best send the most appropriate response to those individuals, right? I think that's what we're all, all of us are trying to do. So I think that's a challenge, and I think that's where the data comes in. I also think that, to, to answer kind of mobile crisis, could we shore up mobile crisis? I, I do think that there is a lot of ways that we could talk about shoring that up. Right now, the team is answering 11 counties, and they are doing over 30 calls a day and over, you know, I think the last time I checked was, if you look at all the counties, it's almost close to 20 full psychiatric inpatient assessments per day. So could they also be a team that could respond into the community if it looked a little different? If it wasn't one person, you know, if it was, if it was more than one person? Or could they go with a, a different support? I mean, I think there's, I, I don't think there's any reason we couldn't look at all the models. And I think that's a good place to start. So, I mean, I think there's a possibility, but I don't know that it would solve all of the need.
Okay. Since my time is up. I don't get much time.
Well, you can, you can, you can ask to come back, and we'll, we'll come back. Thank you for, for doing that. The thing I was going to mention in there, that sounds very much so to me like something we've, you know, we've, obviously councils talked about, but then there's been discussion about it this evening. But maybe that's something where, you know, we could ask our state partners for some help with maybe a pilot program. They could look at something like that, to have a rapid mobile response for people that are dealing with untreated mental health crises, which would go very much so in line with what we're talking about with alternative response as well. So maybe there is some avenues that we've talked about today about, you know, looking at data from 911, but also maybe there's opportunity for some kind of a pilot program as well. I, I saw, Commissioner Frazier had a question.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Madam Chair, for organizing this. And thank you all for being here, whether you are a concerned citizen or you are a healthcare provider. Thank you. Thank you for being in it, day in and day out. I don't even really feel worthy of asking any questions or sharing a concern. But I, I want to talk about our kids for a little bit. The fact that we are now assessing mental health data, starting at the age of nine years old, is really disturbing. I serve on the advisory council at my, my children's school, and one thing I constantly hear from our guidance counselors are the needs for more behavioral health services in our schools. There are long, long waiting lists, a lack of providers, and constantly, I'm asking the question at, at those meetings, well, what are we doing about it? I know staffing is an issue, but, but what, what are you doing about it? Because I don't have an answer, and our kids are struggling. I mean, I, I find it very disturbing, too, that our schools are now teaching other students how to identify a mental health issue in their peers, and, you know, that's, that's concerning to me. I mean, that's, that's an additional layer of stress that is unnecessary on our students. They're already stressed enough. I mean, this is a broken world, and they're just trying to, they're just trying to get an education and, and get through the day. And I just, I feel like we need to do more, and if you can enlighten me in any way.
Councilmember Frazier, we absolutely agree with you. I mean, McNabb has provided embedded mental health professionals in the school system for decades. It's not enough. And we really have been talking internally about, we need to, you know, and I think the Department of Mental Health has really dedicated resources and funding to expand that across the state of Tennessee, so we're very excited about that. But we really need to make sure that children don't have to wait and that we are where they are, so that there's no barrier for them or their family. And then we need to make sure that we take the services into the home as well, right? We want to make sure that the family, the parents, the child, the providers are all on the same page, addressing whatever needs they are to that, for that child and family. So we are absolutely on board with that and ready to expand whenever we are given the go.
I'm sorry, I was just going to add to that. This is of particular interest for me, just because I have a 12-year-old daughter, and it's top of mind daily. My background's also in children's mental health. I, I would say, as LeAnn mentioned, you know, the, the governor has really focused on children's mental health since he took office. Most recently, our department was funded to expand our school-based behavioral health liaison program. So beginning this fiscal year, I think there's close to nine positions that our department's funding to be school-based behavioral health liaisons. I mean, it's, it's really no different than the adult system. You have to go where people are to ensure that they have access to care. And I think for kids, they're in school most of the year, so the more that we can educate teachers on how to identify signs and symptoms, but also give them a resource so they can focus on teaching and they can connect that family to a school-based liaison, the better that child will be served. The other program that I'll mention, because I talked earlier about our department being the safety net for uninsured Tennesseans, there's still an estimated 4% to 5% kids in our state who are uninsured. Governingly helped create a children's behavioral health safety net to serve those uninsured kids in communities across the state that have mental health needs in the community. So I, I would say that, that there, there is a growing need, but I feel pretty strongly that the state's responding to it. We've got a long way to go, just because the, the prevalence... We've got a long way to go just because the prevalence of mental health issues among kids continues to go up. But I, I think going to where this, where kids naturally are, the school setting makes a lot of sense.
That is encouraging. You know, as I said, we've got, we've got multiple schools sharing one behavioral health specialist. And that's just not enough.
Not okay. I'm Mona Blankets and I'm the CEO of the McNabb Center. And I just want to respond to exactly what you've heard LeAnn and Matt say, that, but what I want you all to hear is that Knox County has been ahead of the ballgame and that we have had school-based services in Knox County since 1996. And, and Knox County has really stepped up. And the, the Commissioner, Commissioner Williams, Yancey, Thornton, that are all here, they are very much supportive of school-based services. But this is the time. This, you know, we're going to have a special session in August 21st. The answer is having behavioral health services in the school system. And we need to talk about that. That's how we prevent the violence that we've seen in the schools. And so again, I, I wanted to make sure that everybody heard that Knox County is ahead of the ballgame in that area and we do have a way to go.
If I might also add, yeah, there, there are four stages of mental illness. The earliest stage is when symptoms first onset and they're fairly mild. And that's where we should be trying to reach young people when those symptoms are first onsetting because otherwise, a young person will experience a decade or more of treatment delay before they get help. That means they will be a young adult, well on their way to a life of impairment and disability if we have not recognized and intervened early. That's why interventions at school, with school-based liaisons, embedding mental health resources at school like McNabb does with Knox County schools is vitally important. It's also why the state of Tennessee has been a partner with the Mental Health Association, delivering mental health education in schools since fall of 2000. We do that in the state, or in the school's health curriculum at middle school. We do it at the lifetime wellness curriculum in high school. And the reason is to help young people recognize early the symptoms in their peers. If they recognize it in their brothers and sisters, that's great too. Sometimes those kiddos come back to us and they say, oh, it's my mom and dad. But it doesn't matter who they're recognizing it in. It then becomes, okay, what are you going to do about it? How long have those symptoms been present? Is it two weeks or more or is it an urgent situation like someone's dealing with psychosis? You're not waiting two weeks. If it's suicidality, we're not waiting two weeks. We are teaching kids they've got to act and they act by going to their trusted adults in their school, in their family, in their church to get help. And that's the vital part of mental health education in schools. Let's dial up the intervention early so we have fewer people that we're intervening with at stage four, which is where we're talking about here, crisis services, law enforcement, hospitals and stuff like that. We want to go upstream, stage one and two, catch people earlier where it's easier to treat. Thank you for your concern.
Yeah, and that, and that's really where I'm coming from. You know, we talk about our kids need more career exploration early on and I feel like it's the same as far as making sure that they're, they're happy and they're joyful and they, they can be kids. And so thank you, thank you for what you're doing. It is encouraging. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll try to stay within my time. I want to just affirm what Mona just mentioned. Every principal I speak to talks about the importance of that resource in the school, so it is a really big deal. I'm actually really encouraged because we have two bodies left here and I feel like there's a lot of unity around a couple key things. So like, as a community, I think we should all be proud around, I think there's a couple of things we can do to act out of this. I want to thank everybody, the local service providers, and thank you, thank you, thank you, you know. I'm, I'm also happy to say I agree with everything that's been said before me. So I think that speaks to, to where we're at. I have a question for our friends from the state, Mr. Yancey and Mr. Thornton. I'm more familiar with the local programs and the new emerging programs and the data, but I do remember last year, the, the gap in workers for, for mental health. And I think Mr. Harrington made a compelling case for how to incentivize that. And I believe the commissioner last year stated that last year she applied for specific funding to increase higher education incentives as outlined by Mr. Harrington. I believe she made that appeal again this year. I just wanted to confirm whether, was that approved as part of this recent budget or not?
So, so that, that element of our budget request was not. However, what was, was the aforementioned provider rate increase.
Right.
So I, so I think the approach that the state's looking to take is, because you've got to think about it from a recruitment and a retention standpoint.
Understood.
And so I think, I think for these, this year, last year, we're really trying to focus up and shore up the current workforce with provider rate increases. That being said, we have other funds that we've been able to secure through other grants where we're partnering with, we're actually partnering with the University of Tennessee, School of Social Work, College of Social Work, where they're actually going into high schools to, like as Ben was saying, to educate high school students about careers in behavioral health. I, I do think we're going to continue to advocate for the idea that we can, you know, provide college stipends to people who want to advance their degrees in the behavioral health field.
Right.
With that expectation that they work for agencies like Cherokee, like McNabb, post-graduation. So we're not going to, we're not going to lose sight of that.
Okay, please don't and we'll help you with that because I think as part of the budget, Governor Lee appropriated funds to recruit police officers. And I think the irony that the, those police officers and mental health workers are both short-staffed and need more compensation and are in great need and one was funded and the other was not, I think is another reason for us to keep advocating for that. So thank you for affirming, confirming that. I do think, I just want to follow up on Councilwoman McKenzie and Councilwoman Parker's comments around, you know, it seems like the admissions are going down, but the beds are going up and I, I, you know, I don't, I do applaud the innovation that you've taken at the state level. My read on the street here and my eyewitness isn't that we're being more successful at solving the problem here locally, but I do want to applaud, you're listening to the innovative ideas of the local service providers because I think that's very important. The Children CSU, the EMPATH, you know, that, whether that started at the state level or started at a local level, there's, everyone's listening and I think you can hear the most acute needs locally by listening to these voices and new voices at the table. So I commend you for listening to those and meeting them and, and to keep Knox County innovative in this, in this realm. So thanks for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, a couple of questions. We talked about available beds and when we have them. Could someone talk a little bit about how we're doing as far as outreach when we do have available beds, finding the people who need them and getting them into those beds?
Are you meaning recipients or who might need?
I'm mainly talking about homeless people. Like if you have available beds and there might be a psycholo, psychiatric need for them. I, I know that we have a staffing problem, but when we do have those beds that are open...
Yeah.
What is the mechanism for finding people that are mentally ill, mentally ill on the street and getting them in those beds?
That's a great question. I'm going to answer it a couple of different ways. And Candace, you have not talked, so I want you to feel like you can talk. So I, I would like to say, individuals who are admitted into an inpatient psychiatric hospitalization bed have to meet criteria for that. They have to have, you know, a, a plan to harm themselves or someone else, means, intent, all those things kind of have to be in place. So when you think about it that way, it's not sometimes that easy and shouldn't be to get into that level of care. Would y'all agree? Okay. So an individual can be homeless and have a mental illness and not meet eligibility. And what we know is there's not enough housing in our community right now. And I think we, while we have a lot of services that try to reach that population, it is difficult and challenging and, and it's, there's not enough services in that area. Would, I mean, I'd please respond to that.
No, absolutely. I just want to say, like, all this, I, I absolutely love the talk of, like, we need more beds for, for mental health, but I want to make sure we're not using that as a way to basically imprison or institutionalize people. About a third of my clients experience psychosis, about a third also have sometimes chronic suicidality, about 70% have PTSD, many are houseless. They don't need to be in a psychiatric institution because they're not meeting those criteria. What they need is secure housing, they need more case management services, they need more money, right? Like, can you live off $800 disability? No. So I think, like, we don't want to use hospitals and needing more hospital beds as a way to take away from the fact that we need systemic, like, increase in services that's going to keep people in the community.
So I, I would also just, you know, follow up by saying, permanent supportive housing with, with different levels. So where you have intent, where you can, for some individuals may need more in-house support than just maybe just an independent living. So I, I think there's different levels that we could look at in Knox County and expand. I think there's probably some shortage in that way, in that area.
I was just going to add to that, one of the criteria, the legal statutory criteria for emergency involuntary admission to an inpatient psychiatric hospital, the criteria is found under Title 33, Chapter 6, Part 4. But one of those would be that there is no less drastic or less restrictive alternative that is available and suitable to meet the person's needs other than inpatient hospitalization. So I made the reference, whenever I was going through the slides quickly, that, yeah, this is, this is the end of the road. All other resources have been exhausted, there are no alternatives. That's where we find the regional mental health institutes and the emergency involuntary commitment process.
Thanks for all your thoughts on that. I knew that wasn't an easy question and I do realize that there are hurdles, legal and otherwise consensual, that you have to, that you have to take into account. There is a bit of a, I think, frustration in the community where they will see people out on the street that are obviously mentally ill and then they hear that there's beds.
Yep.
But, so I appreciate you sharing some of the, the problems and issues and what you're doing with that. One other question I had, Mr. Harrington, you mentioned some things about a couple of hospitals closing, another one might possibly close, that they're losing $150 a day for ten care patients. Elaborate on that. Is that sustainable and what would it take to fix it?
Yeah, so the, the first part of your question was hospitals that closed because they weren't receiving ten care for certain services, that sort of thing. UT Medical Center closed their psych unit in 1994, Children's Hospital closed their psych unit in 1994. Baptist Hospital never got ten care money. So that really was kind of the nail in the coffin and eventually would lead to their closing units, divisions of that hospital, their outpatient side, et cetera, and then eventually merging with, with St. Mary's. The, the two new private hospitals, they take commercial insurance money, private PAC, and they take some ten care patients. Their ten care patient is funded at a rate that's about a loss of $150 per day. I don't know the answer to how long that is sustainable, but I, I will tell you, you know, I have meetings with CEOs like Mona at McNabb and, you know, Perinda Catrera at Cherokee and stuff. So I hear stuff. And both hospital CEOs are commiserating over the fact that their ten, ten care reimbursement rate is not sufficient. And so that, that's an issue. I don't know if they'd ever be open-minded to receiving funds from the department for serving the uninsured, but if they were open-minded to that, I think that, that they'd look squarely back at what they're getting for ten care and, and just say, it's got to be sufficient to pay the bills. We can't lose on every one of those patients we see there. And so that's kind of what they're experiencing. They would prefer, I think, to have patients that have a payment source that's going to be able to make them whole. Because they're a for-profit business.
Well, I, I wonder if the expansion of Medicaid might serve some of those problems. I don't care what you had to say about it. I just, and I'll only add that, our sister state of North Carolina...
That's a complicated question. But I, I would tell you that obviously if the state had expanded Medicaid, there would be more resources coming in on a daily basis to support healthcare in general. But I would also be remiss if I didn't tell you to look at states where they did expand Medicaid and ask the question, are they having similar problems with the behavioral health workforce staffing and shortages and staff beds versus total bed licenses, that sort of thing. And I think that you could look at states like New York and New Jersey and Minnesota, they're having some of the same challenges we're having.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Thomas, I've got to move on. I've got just a few more left and we're going on a very long meeting, which is fine, it's a good discussion, but I do need to move on. Councilmember Parker, you had wanted to say something.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. I wanted to follow up on some of the discussion that I was hearing, just to bring us back to kind of what started this conversation and, and emphasize that, you know, what we're hoping to come out of this process is a non-police response that can serve a, a portion of our community that's being underserved currently or not receiving the best services they could be receiving currently. And that's one reason why, you know, mobile crisis has not been discussed because it is not a non-police response. In terms of the data, I'm, still want to encourage us, if we want to come together as a joint group, that we create a space for us to work collectively. These workshop spaces, especially when we have such a small amount of time to talk, do not allow us to review data thoroughly as we need to do to really understand what's going on in our community. Councilwoman Ryder brought up a, an overdose that recently happened in her district on Broadway and that was a son of a family friend of mine that I grew up with. And the details that I heard was that he was in recovery and what he overdosed on was the medication he was prescribed to get off of his addiction. And so that's someone who could possibly have benefited from an alternative response service, someone who he could go to, to help counsel him on how to take those new drugs that have been prescribed so that he didn't OD on those drugs. Or, you know, what I've also heard is that, you know, he was in a car that night and those he was in a car with pushed him out of the car, afraid to have someone overdose in their car. What if they were able to call someone for help and not fear that law enforcement would respond? These are the stories. We don't necessarily have all of that data coming from 911, but from, you know, being in community, we, we hear what is happening in our community. And that is what is motivating me and so many others to want us to consider and move forward on adopting a non-police response. And so I'd encourage us, if, if the county wants to continue in this conversation, let's form a joint work group or a joint task force so that we can actually have space to review this data. And it will take a long time. I'm going to go over just a little bit. I just have to say this. What I envisioned is, in the first six months, we would go through all of this to figure out, where would this be housed? Who could respond? And kind of, you know, map out the very basic bones of the program. And then we would take that and go look for funding to help fund a planning process so that we can start to develop those protocols, those dispatch codes, understanding how this new program would work with alternative response. So even though the initial proposal was six months of planning, that's just to get us in agreement that we need alternative response and we have individuals in our communities who can help us move this forward, then we begin to map it out. So this is a long process and I hope that we can make a commitment as a city and potentially also as a county to creating space... also as a county, to creating space to move this work forward.
Thank you very much. Before we get, before we close, I'd like to recognize Chair Dorrett.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you all for such candid comments and discussion. We definitely are here for a reason. I think that's very obvious. Rather than reiterate what everyone in this room has said, because I agree with everything that has been said, I'm just going to get to the, I'm going to get to the hard asks. We are starting an EMPATH unit as a short-term facility, three days to be exact. My question is, where do they go after that? The options locally, and I use quotes, are Chattanooga, Blount County, Johnson City, or Oak Ridge. If they go to Chattanooga and are transported by our law enforcement, that costs the county money. So Ask Number 1, a local Knox County, state-funded and staffed inpatient service for the uninsured and ten care patients. Ask Number 2, a grant to support and expand co-response team efforts. Build up the current one in Knoxville and expand to Knox County. And I will piggyback onto that with Ask Number 3, have help from the state for a pilot program for a rapid mobile response. And the key word there is rapid. If we get to these people, like the person on Broadway, too late, we are too late, and we have lost a life. And so with that, again, I thank you all. Your discussions have been incredibly insightful. Thank you to our, our service providers for being here. But I hope, and, and as Councilmember Parker just said, I agree, let's do this task force. Let's do this joint task force together, so we can make these actionable items come to life. And thank you, Vice Mayor Roberto, for, for working together to bring this before us tonight, and, and hopefully, this is not another "come back in a year and let's talk some more." That, that needs to end at 7:51 on August the 3rd.
Very good. Thank you very much, Chair Dorrett. You know, I think what we've heard is that the mental health crisis that's going on is not unique to Knoxville. But I think what is unique is that we have these local legislative groups getting together and committing, despite there being some differences and maybe some perspectives and opinions, this is something we all can agree on. And I think everyone has heard things this evening that we all agree on. And I think that common purpose is really what brought us to here together today, and I think that's the focus on us moving forward. I also want to just thank Chair Dorrett for all of her assistance. I want to thank our Knox County Commissioners for being here, our state partners who joined us as well, my council colleagues. Thank you all for, you know, supporting, getting back together again, and for being engaged in this discussion. You know, we got all this started from your workshop, where, you know, you had said, hey, this is something we want to work on, and we want to include other partners. So I really appreciate all of that. And then a final thank you to all of our, the folks who presented all the information you did. It was a hard ask to, to give these presentations as quickly as you did, but we do appreciate you, you doing that and working with us. And then also just a thank you to all of our providers one more time, because those professional providers are really helping so much in our community, and we all really appreciate it. And with that, at 7:53, I'll close this meeting. Thank you all very much.